Good evening and welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for January 12th, 2023. It's our first meeting of 2023. So, welcome everyone. Let's, let's get started. So call to order and we'll do pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Francisco, any sunshine announcements?
Yes. In accordance with the O B public meetings act, notice of this hearing has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City reporter, Alyssa Vizalito, and posted with the city clerk on Friday, January 6th, 2023. We have notices to be marked.
That will be be one for tonight's agenda. You want an evidence?
Thank you, Bridget. And can you please take roll call whenever you're ready?
Yes, I see Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner, so Commissioner Aruha.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Park.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Coyle.
Here.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Here.
We have a total of seven commissioners present tonight.
Thanks, Francisco. Can you please swear in staff, Bridget?
Where are firm the testimony or about given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any correspondence?
Yes, let me share my screen. All right. All right, other than the adjournments, which is case Z 21 dash 02, the address is 75 Crescent. They have carried to a date uncertain with preservation of notice. We do have one item, which is item number 13, case Z 22 dash 040. The address is 74 Brower Street. They have requested to carry to the next meeting, which is January 26th, with preservation of notice. And all other items will be going forward tonight.
Okay, so if you're here for 74 Brower Street, that is not going to be heard today. And, and what's the date again to tell, to remind the people listening?
The next date would be January 26th.
Okay, so come back January 26th, but otherwise, your application that you're here for will go today, right?
That's correct.
Okay, great, then let's proceed with old business. Case, sorry.
Chairman, do you think we should do the extensions first? They could be quick. The rest of the, these are three extensions.
Sure, let's do that. Then we're going to start with new business, case Z 22 dash 099. This is for three one-year extensions for 79 Giles Avenue.
Promoting Bernadette.
Hi, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony or about given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure, it's B E Bernadette B E R N A D E T T E. Am I last name? Are you waiting for? Oh, I'm sorry. P I N O, Pino. Sorry about that.
So Ms. Pino, I, I, and Vinnie, I don't know if you wanted to say anything, but I mean, Ms. Pino, what are, what are you here seeking? Can you give some explanation? Do you have any experts on your behalf? Probably not.
No, no, I don't. I just started my project and I'm here because I need more time. Due to COVID and supply chain issues and, you know, I have delayed the renovation project. And my resolution was approved December 3rd, 2020, case number C 20 dash 062. And my due to unfore, due to those unforeseen circumstances, I was not able to start the renovation project. And I intend to build this year prior to December 2023.
Is there anything else that anyone needs to hear from Ms. Pino? Do you have anyone from the board have any questions?
No.
Okay, does anyone from, is there anyone out there from the public that has any questions about this extension of an already approved application for 79 Giles Avenue?
At this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close the public portion of this application or this extension request. Okay, does staff have any view? I assume no.
The only thing that staff would recommend as well as approval is just the continuation of the conditions that were applied with the previous approval.
So Francisco, what you're saying is someone will probably make a motion momentarily and, and in making that motion, they should say, I, you know, propose a motion to approve the, the three one-year extensions to this already approved application with the pre-existing conditions.
That's correct.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to provide it, to extend it to, to.
To approve the extension?
Through the extension, three one-year extensions and with the pre-existing conditions from the prior approval.
Second.
Commissioner Shadine.
I made you on mute.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Kim, you're on, no. Kim, did you vote?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Aruha. Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Coyle.
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor. Good luck.
Thanks, you know. Thanks, Ms. Pino. Good luck. Look forward to seeing the project.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay, then we'll exte, uh, continue with case Z 22 dash 086 for an extension at 37 Storms Avenue.
Promoting Eugene O'Connell.
Hey, I think I'm, how my video started, I'm unmute, so.
Now we see you now, Jean, and hear you. Take that back. We can't hear you. At least I can't.
He muted himself.
Yeah, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Francisco, are you able to unmute Mr. O'Connell?
Uh, I can ask him to unmute, but I can't unmute him.
Was that?
Yes.
Now, now we can hear you and see you.
Terrific. Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for putting me on the agenda tonight. Happy New Year. Again, is an extension for one year for 37 Storms Avenue. It was approved back in December of 2020 on the Z 19 107. It's to construct a four-story building with left units and 12 Wall Street parking. Well, like everybody else, that this application got delayed by COVID. Then, once COVID started to be alleviated, supply for lumber and other articles became very expensive. Then recently we had inflation, but my client now believes he can get everything started before the end of the year. So we're asking just for a one-year extension.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. O'Connell? Does anyone from the public have any questions about this extension for 37 Storms Avenue?
At this time, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion of the application. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the extension with previous conditions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve case Z 22 dash 086, 86, as presented to the board tonight with previous conditions.
I second it.
Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Aruha.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Coyle.
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and Francisco very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Hope to see it built soon.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to proceed with case Z 22 dash 104 for a two-year extension at 130 Summit Avenue.
Yes, good evening. For the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant for the extension. I, I did provide notices for the extension as well, so I'd ask that those be noted into the record.
Yes, Chuck, we do have the notices. We've looked at them. We approved them. And Bridget, they will mark these as a one for this application.
Okay, a one for this application in evidence.
Okay, so yeah, very briefly, this, this is an application that was approved by this board on, on May 27th, 2021. It is for the renovation of the existing church at 130 Summit Avenue. And then the construction of two new five-story buildings with 82 residential units and, and nine workforce units. And I only point that out because the, the issues related to the request for this extension is, is COVID, which, you know, similar to the prior applications. But there's also an historical financing that's associated with this property that, that went back to the, to the, actually, it's the current owner because we haven't closed yet. Garden State Episcopal. And my client is working with the city, with the community development with regard to that financing and how it would apply to this project. And depending on how that, that works out, which they've been working probably a good eight months on, the unit mix for the affordable may change. It may change the mix of the, of the workforce, and it also may change the count, possibly increasing it. So we're, we're working through those issues and trying to, you know, complete that process, which we hope to have completed within the next month or two. But we're, we're asking for the extension, even though it runs until May of 2023. But it's, it's more of a belt and suspenders to, to protect this going forward. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harrington. Does anyone have any questions concerning this extension request from the board? Okay, Francisco, does it look like anyone from the public has any questions regarding this extension to the approved application for 130 Summit Avenue?
No, at this time, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, we'll close the public portion. I assume there's no public, there's no staff comment other than that the extension, you know, is granted pursuant to pre, you know, approved conditions?
That's correct.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the extension to the motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z 22 dash 104, two-year extension with pre-approval conditions as presented to the board this evening.
I second.
Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Aruha.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Coyle.
Yes.
And Chair, Chairman Jacobs.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you, and I appreciate moving this up.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks. Good night.
Night. Okay, let's proceed then with
the biggie.
Old business cases, E 21 dash 093, address to Troy Street.
Oh, promoting Gerard.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Evening.
So I do have, I, I guess I'll start it up. I guess where we left counsel the last time was Ms. Hagiyanis was in the process of her case in chief as to her, the objections to the proposed application. I believe she was in the middle of her examination of her client, the Ms. Odzirk. I apologize if I mispronounced that name. And I'll leave it to the board as to, you know, we're just going to pick up right where we left off. I do have my team here. I don't anticipate calling or having them retestify. But of course, we just reserve the right in case, depending on how Ms. Hagiyanis decides to proceed, you know, we just ask for some deference there and, and just reserve some time in case it's necessary.
That's fine. So Mr. Pizzolo, just so the record is clear, when we heard this case, I'm trying to find the date here, December 8th. Chairman Jacobs and Commissioner Arroyo were not here. But they have read the transcript, and I think they have a piece of paper that is certified to that, but just so the record is clear. They have read the, the transcript, and I think every other commissioner that's here was here live. So is, is Ms. Cynthia here? I just see her picture. Is she, she on, Francisco?
I am, sorry. Sorry, I didn't realize that.
So Cynthia, I guess we, we pick up with where you left off.
Right, so I, I was on the verge of displaying some exhibits when, when we broke and it was getting kind of late and Mr. Lapaglia suggested I show the exhibits to the applicant's lawyer before we proceed, and I, I believe Mr. Pizzolo had a chance to look at them.
I, I received your email yesterday, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
To be honest, before we, we proceed, I just wanted, like, this is just a procedural thing, I guess, but Vinnie, I just wanted to note, I, I don't know, Bridget, if this is your report. My name is, is listed on line 14511, like, and I think it just should have been, it, it was Kathy in, in my speaking, not me speaking. I wasn't present at the meeting. So if you want to correct the record of the transcript on page 145, line 11, from Chairman Jacobs to Chair Coyle. So it's correct. You can do that.
Cut and paste, sir. Sorry.
No worries.
Okay, so um, I, I would, can we promote Mrs. Oz Turk who was wrapping up her testimony on December 8th?
Promoting now.
Hello. Okay, yeah, and good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. This is Mrs. Oz Turk. If you remember from last time, she is, she and her husband own the immediately adjacent properties at 805 and 807 Summit Avenue, and we were just going to show some photos and a couple of renderings that Mrs. Oz Turk had assembled to, to help illustrate her testimony from last time. So if it's okay, I'd like to share my screen.
You should have access, but let me know if you don't.
It says it's disabled.
Okay.
Counselor, sorry, as we get these up, I just would object to the presentation of these exhibits. I don't believe they would, they're relevant to the legal proceedings here. And for the extent of whatever these exhibits show that's beyond the scope of lay testimony that we get into, you know, an expert testimony, I just would like to preserve that objection for the record.
Okay, that's fine, but I guess let's see these exhibits one at a time, because I, I was shown them yesterday as well. The rendering, I don't think, is admissible. But there are photos, to the extent that they're relevant, if Ms. Oz took, took those photos, I guess they depict what they depict. There was some photo from 1910. I don't see how that's relevant at all, but unless I, my memory is gone, and there wasn't, there wasn't that photo, but let's see what she wants to identify. Let's see if she can identify it as something she took.
Okay.
We go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so um, and I would just, shall I swear in the witness again, Mr. Chairman, or?
You probably should, right? It's been a month. Yeah.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could spell your name for the record?
Chidam, C I G, D E M, Oz Turk.
Okay, so can everyone see my screen?
No, no.
Oh, oh, okay. Let's see. Oh, I see, okay. Um.
Now we can.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so, um, so Chidam, can you just, these are photos you provided to me that you felt helped illustrate some of the points you made the last time with the board? Can we just briefly discuss some of these photos and, and the renderings that you gave me?
Yes, this is the photo I took our 807 Summit and 805 Summit houses when we bought them.
Okay, which one is 805 and which one is 807?
805 is the red one, which will be next to Troy, and the green one is 807, where we live.
Okay, and you don't live in that exact house right now, though, at 807, do you?
No, we, we made a new construction. We made a new house.
Okay, and then, and you, and what does this photo show now?
This is our house after the construction. The red one is our house, 805 Summit, which is a rental property. And the green one is 807, where we live. And the next one is 819 Summit, which is our neighbor, which is a Victorian house.
Okay, and, and you said 807 is new construction at this point?
Yes, it is brand new construction.
Okay, and, and even though Mr. Pizzolo objected, would, what did, would you describe what this, for the record, what this rendering is of?
Yes, when we hired our architect, he came up first with this drawing for our house. And my husband and I decided this was not really matching to the next properties, the 819 Victorian House and 805 Summit. So that's why we asked, even though we like, actually personally, this modern look, we told him to change it because it was not really matching or fitting in the neighborhood fabric.
Okay, and then, and then what, what's this rendering?
This is, this is his last drawing after we provided him pictures and what kind of look we want have. And this is the new house, architectural drawing from, from our plans.
Okay, and, and, and this is what you ended up building, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and what's this picture showing?
This is when we bought the property, the, the lot behind us, which is now 16 Troy. How it was, it was a tree, this is a winter, but it was like 13 trees there, and it was a lot which was surrounded by another, by other 12 properties, and this is how we bought. This was our view from the backyard.
Okay, so it, it was a, like a small forest, basically?
It was a small forest with really old oak trees.
Okay, um, and, and, and now this photo number six, what is this depicting?
This is the new construction which was built in 16 Troy. And it is, it has six units, and this is actually the narrow side. From our view, the other sides to our neighbors are much wider, so six-unit multifamily property.
And, and you took all of these pictures?
Yes, this is my view from my window.
Okay, and, and is this your backyard?
Yes, this is my backyard.
Is it, is it both backyards for 805 and 807?
Yes, correct, both, both 805 and 807.
Okay, um, and I mean, how do you, how do you react when you have to look out at that project?
I, I cried when they were cutting those trees. And then every day I had really, I was really very upset, every day seeing how much bigger it will get. And it is big. And, and it just replaced all the, all the trees.
Okay, um, well, thank, thank you, Mrs. Oz Turk. I, I believe that concludes her direct testimony.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Pizzolo, you want to cross-examine her if you don't have to?
I, I do have just three short questions for Ms. Oz Turk. Thank you. And Ms. Oz Turk, just simple couple of questions, yes or no, I would just ask answers. You testified previously, you live at 807 Summit Avenue?
Yes.
And you rent at, you own 805 Summit Avenue and rented out, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and 805 Summit Avenue is the property immediately adjacent to, to Troy Street, the subject of the advocates tonight, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so it's, and I, you testified at the last hearing that your concern is related to your tenants' light in air, not your personal light in air. Is that correct?
I own the property.
Yep.
And I have.
I would just, just yes or no, please. Yes or no, yes or no, please?
Ask me one more time, please. I'm having a hard time to understand.
The concerns with light in air related to the distance of the rear yard between 805 Summit Avenue and to Troy Street. It's not your light in air, but your proposed and prospective tenants' light in air.
The distance from 805.
Yes or no, please?
Yes, but I have to add one more thing.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
807 is affected as well.
Counsel.
Okay, okay, so, um, I, I think we're okay.
Okay.
You have another witness?
I, I do. Mr. Oz Turk is going to offer a little bit of testimony. So if he could be promoted.
What is his first name?
Oh, 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 actually, I'm sorry. I, I, I would like to move those exhibits into evidence.
Counsel, I have no objection to the photos. I think they were properly authenticated. I do have an objection to the renderings and drawings prepared by third parties. I don't think the proper foundation was laid for those documents. We don't know when they were prepared, who prepared them, when they were prepared. And I, I don't think they were properly authenticated, and I don't think. And I, I don't think they were properly authenticated, and I don't think they're relevant here. Uh, and I would just ask that they, those be stricken.
I would tend to agree with you. So, but did we, we didn't mark any of these, did we, Cynthia?
Uh, no, we did not.
So, uh, I don't know how you do this on Zoom.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult, um, I mean, I, I, I did, I did wanna, you know, I just, I did just want to respond to the, the statement that the photos were not properly authentic, I mean, the renderings were not properly authenticated. My client said she had her, her own architect prepared them, uh, you know, prior to building new construction. It's her own architect, it's her own home, it's her own drawing that she paid someone to make. I can't imagine that there's anything, uh, and we're not offering it into evidence as an expert, uh, you know, to support expert testimony. So I, I, uh, I, I would disagree that it hasn't been properly authenticated.
So why don't we mark them all anyway? And we just make a ruling that, that the, uh, the board just considers the photo. You'll have it preserved in case somebody's appealing this. And, uh, to be honest, one of the renderings that depict what the picture shows is probably to put, the other one as to what she would have liked to, to, to put there is kind of, you know, irrelevant.
Okay.
In any event, let's, let's mark them all, Bridget, however we do this on Zoom, and, and the, uh,
The record needs to be clear on what exactly we're marking and how many?
You, I think there were, were there four photographs?
There, there were, um, let's see, one, two, three, yeah, there were four, there were, oh, actually.
If, if I may, if we're gonna do this all one shot, it's an eight-page PDF that includes one, two, three, four, five, six photos, and two renderings. And I'm, I think where we left off, it would be objector two.
Thank you. Oh, two for indication, uh, for in evidence.
Hey, um, if we could, if we could promote, uh, Mr. Oz Turk?
I'm here, Cynthia.
Oh, okay, great, um.
Again, counsel, before counsel, I, I would object to this witness. Uh, I'm sorry, I, I believe what the facts, a factual witness here has already been testified. It's a husband and wife, they have counsel. I'm not sure what, what Mr. Oz Turk can add that would be new and or different from his wife's testimony. Uh, and I would just ask, I would, I would ask him not to be permitted to testify because of those reasons.
Mm-hmm.
Relevant duplicativeness, accumulation.
Wait, wait, Jerry, hold on one second. We can't rule on it's being duplicative when we haven't heard it. Uh, so, but Cynthia, you know what we're doing here, right? You don't want to bore us to death.
No, no, I, I, I don't, and I think we'll be quick, and we did actually intentionally, you know, my, the intention in bringing them up was to have Mrs. Oz Turk give a little bit of background and context. And then Mr. Oz Turk is going to talk more specifically about, um, some things he, he's observed having to do with setbacks and some of the renderings he's studied.
Well, I, I don't know if he's gonna be able to testify as to setbacks. You have a, uh, you, you, you have, uh, your, your plan on, on, on that issue.
Well, I.
All right, before we, before we do the point, let's go here first, and we'll go from there.
Okay, okay, um.
Hey, would you raise your right hand if you swore? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state your full name for the record?
It's, um, Mustafa Oz Turk, M-U-S-T-A-F-A, it's my first name. Oz Turk is my last name, O-Z-T-U-R-K.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Oz.
Can I ask a question, Chairman? Uh, the witness here is, could be time limited or?
As a witness, no, this is, this is the objectors', uh, witness. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't under, what was the question? I didn't understand it.
It, it was related to the, that if this was, from the public, we give, um, you know, time limits.
Gotcha, okay.
But this is, you know, you have the opportunity to put on your, your case.
Thank you, um, so, Mr. Oz Turk, uh, do you own the home immediately to the north of two Troy?
Yes, I do.
And what's the address?
Eight oh five Summit Avenue.
And what's the exist, the, you, the approximate distance between the home on eight oh five Summit and the current, uh, building that's at two Troy?
We measured at twenty-seven feet.
And do you recall the applicant's expert's testimony about the minimum required setback, uh, between your property line and, uh, the proposed structure at two Troy?
Uh, at which, which instance, which meeting, um, there were a couple, uh, statements that were made, so.
Well, um, I, I, interesting.
Cynthia, in case I'm missing something here, are you asking him to testify what he measured? I don't think he's qualified to do that.
I think a layperson can take a measurement.
I guess anybody can take a measurement, but you're expecting us to, 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 to rule, to, to, to judge this case on what this layman said he took the measurement? He's not certified as a surveyor. How do I know he took it right? How does the board know he took it right?
Uh-huh.
A foot off here or there, and that's determinative of something, of a setback. You, you can't do it this way.
Um.
If you, if you're, if you're really concerned that the setbacks are wrong here, you should get your own surveyor to tell us that. Not somebody with a measuring tape.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, I mean, that's what I believe.
Uh-huh, I, I don't, I don't think the point we're trying to make is that there's anything wrong with the setbacks.
But then what is the point?
Um, just.
That he doesn't like it?
The cha, the chain, the drastic change, and how he's affected by it.
Well, why doesn't he just say that? Why does he have to tell us that he measured it and, and now he's, he's offended by it? Is he saying that somehow this, the setback as he looks at it?
I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna say in general that, um, all of the plans go into the file that's available to the public to study in advance of the hearing. And I would think that if the public's allowed to study all the plans, they are also allowed to analyze them and make comments on them, and that it should, you, and that, uh, holding a member of the public to the same standard as you would hold an expert witness, I, I just, uh, I think it, it puts them at a disadvantage in being able to even just offer testimony.
I, I don't want to be.
And I'm not sure why you would put the plans online and let the public look at them without letting the public comment on them.
But he's not commenting on the plans. He's testifying that he's measured something, and in his opinion, that the measurement is wrong. Well, is that the testimony?
No, no, he never said it was wrong.
I'm saying that this is what's about to come out of his mouth. What is he going?
No, that's not true.
Okay, so let's just proceed, let's just proceed then, we won't, we don't have to get hung up on the measurement. Uh, if you want to strike that from the record, that's okay. Um, okay, so, um, so, Mr. Oz Turk, what, what is, what, in your opinion, or what is wrong with the setback that's proposed?
Objection, objection, he's not here to give opinion, expert opinion testimony, it's factual testimony. His opinion as to the setback is beyond unfortunate.
I can change the word to.
For the whole evening, one speaker at a time.
I'll rephrase the question.
Can I make a suggestion, just, is there a way to just ask maybe an open-ended question to, uh, Mr. Oz Turk and say, can you just tell us what it is you want to tell us today? And, and then let's see what happens?
Sure, sure, um, so, Mr. Oz Turk, what would, what would you like to communicate to the board about the proposed development project?
Yeah, we have fourteen windows on the south side of eight oh five Summit Avenue. Um, and fourteen windows, that building's been there for a hundred plus years. And as the architect mentioned last, uh, couple of weeks ago, uh, our building is on the lot line. Um, when we bought this house, uh, and we liked it a lot, we liked the neighborhood a lot. Uh, the building configuration of two Troy was, it has a backyard, and a backyard is facing our house, our house has a lot of space. Our assumption when we, we bought this house and moved to Jersey City was that the city would, would adhere the, or hold up the rules, the zoning rules, and, and not allow development to happen where all of a sudden there's big, tall, large building is now five feet away from fourteen windows that I have, which is going to reduce the air, the light, the views, and, and the, the quality of life of the tenants that live there, and the value of our property. Um, so, so setback-wise, that, that is, that is my, my main objection. When we were building eight oh seven Summit Avenue, when we went to the planning department, the planning department made us change our plans and include a, a depiction of the prominent setback from Summit Avenue. And, and how our building was, uh, placed within the buildings that exist right now in Summit Avenue, including two Troy, eight oh five Summit, and eight oh nine Summit. So the prominent setback, and this is also shown in the architect's, uh, exhibit itself on page, uh, four, is about twenty feet, uh, as the architect puts it. Um, the current setback proposed from Summit Avenue is, is five feet, which is gonna create a, a lot, a lot of shadows on both eight oh five Summit and eight oh seven Summit. Uh, and that's, that's the point I would like to make on, on the setbacks.
Okay, um, we, we did have a, we did have a, an exhibit that Mr. Oz Turk put together where he did some diagrams showing the setbacks, but I have a feeling Mr. Pizzillo is preparing to object to that.
I, I don't think we need to put it in, uh, I mean, I think the, 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 uh, architect's exhibit, page number four, shows, shows the same thing. And I, I think if they're objecting to the diagrams I created, we can, we can talk, uh, based on that diagram.
Okay, so, Mr. Pizzillo, are you?
Yeah, I, I am objecting, I, I don't think this is a proper exhibit for, I think it's a proper expert document, uh, if there was an expert and an engineer or a qualified surveyor. Uh, I think they could definitely testify as to those diagrams, I did take a look at it unfortunately. As, as a layperson not qualified, uh, appearing here factually, I, I believe they're improper, uh, and, and should not be admitted into evidence.
Okay, I, I would like them marked for the purpose of identification.
Well, what documents are we talking about? Because maybe I misunderstood. I thought, I heard Mr. Oz Turk say, I'd like it if we could review what's already been put into evidence by an architect. And I'm going to give comment as a layperson on, on that.
Yeah, yeah, I guess we're, 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 we had also prepared something else, but I guess he's gonna just focus his comments on the PowerPoint presentation that, um, Mr. Garber, uh, talked about at the, at the last, uh, hearing.
Your witness is telling us that he doesn't need his own, his own diagram.
Okay, okay.
Based, based on the fact that there's been pushback from the board.
Right, whatever.
Okay, so, um, I, I would like to pull up the, the PowerPoint. So my client studied it and would like to offer some comments on the PowerPoint that was presented to the board by Mr. Garber at the last hearing.
And, and in the context, I, I think, uh, but I don't want to speak for either you, Ms. Hajiyanis, or you, Mr. Oz Turk, but that Mr. Oz Turk is gonna look at these as the, as any, uh, layperson, uh, and just give his, uh, feelings and impressions, uh, without, you know, he's not an expert in the area, um, but these are my thoughts, kind of.
Yes, that's, that's exactly right, yes. Okay, so, um, um, and actually, before we proceed to that, Mr. Oz Turk, could you just describe what this photo is of?
Yeah, the, that's our south side of our building, uh, showing, uh, our windows. Uh, you can see eleven, uh, windows, and there's actually, um, three more basement windows, you can see one of them, but there's two more in the back that's not visible in this picture.
Okay, and then just.
Cynthia, just, Cynthia, I'm sorry, just to confirm, is that oh two?
That was actually part of the set of photos, um, that, the eight, the eight, the six photos that were part of oh two, yeah.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, okay, so, um, so, Mr. Oz Turk, did, did you review, um, this document, which is a, a, a PowerPoint, um, presented to the board by the applicant's architect at the last hearing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and what, what were your observations?
Uh, I mean, if you go to, uh, page number four, uh, and if you zoom out a little bit, um, you can't see the text on the top left. It says, I believe it says something setback map. If you maybe scroll to the left, if you can.
Oh, wait a second. You're kind of rearranging the.
Yeah, there's a scroll bar on the bottom of the picture.
Oh, okay, yeah, this is my, my technical limitations are on display here.
So, building setback map, um, shows, I believe, the setbacks of the current buildings, um, from both Troy, Troy Street and Summit Avenue. So you can see from Troy Street, the, the five buildings are highlighted, two Troy being the, the rightmost building. The setbacks are all twenty feet. And then there are two markers, uh, also highlighting from the setback from Summit Avenue, one for eight oh five Summit Avenue, showing a twenty-feet setback, uh, uh, for eight oh five Summit, and then a twenty-foot setback is shown for, also for two Troy. Uh, this is the current, uh, layout, and my belief is this twenty-foot setback on Summit is the predominant setback for, for these buildings, including eight oh seven Summit, eight oh nine Summit. Now, if you go to, um, slide number, I believe, thirteen, yeah, now this shows the new building, um, and you can see the new setback on Summit is now five, five feet.
All right, okay.
I just wanted to highlight that, um, it, the building is, uh, you know, so, eight oh nine seven, eight oh seven Summit, eight oh five Summit are all kind of staggered backwards. But when it comes to two Troy, when, in this design, two Troy is, is not pushed back like the other buildings, and, and, and it's very tall, um, and so it's gonna create, uh, very large shadows on, on, uh, our building.
Okay. And did you have any other observations?
Um, yeah, in this document, uh, the facades were mislabeled uh, in two places, so, um, and I believe we were shown, um, the western facade as if it was the northern facade during the presentation, a couple of weeks ago, not that one, the next slide. Okay, so this is, this is actually the north facade mislabeled as the east facade. So this is the, the facade facing eight oh five Summit. And this is what our tenants will see when they look out the window. They're gonna be, uh, those two windows on the, uh, two Troy, uh, our bedroom, bedroom windows. So our tenants are gonna be looking into the bedrooms of, uh, these apartments, and vice versa, they're gonna look back into living areas, uh, in, in eight oh five Summit. Um, our, our bathroom windows face, face, uh, this building. And they seem pretty closely aligned. And they seem pretty closely aligned with the the windows shown here.
Okay, and.
The next slide uh was presented, so page twenty nine. Uh, this was presented as the north facade, but this is actually the western facade. This is what four Troy sees. And uh, there are two large windows. Uh, these are kitchen windows that are facing the backyard of four Troy, six Troy, uh eight oh five Summit. Uh, so whenever's ha- anybody's having some sort of gathering uh at those properties, um you know, the people living here will be uh looking at them um directly.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's more or less uh my testimony on on the presentation.
Okay, did you, did you have anything to say about the front yard setback along?
Oh, um, yeah, if we could go to, I'm sorry, um, net, uh, page twenty seven. Actually, uh, page twenty nine would be better.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
We were there, we were just there.
Yeah, 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 I got confused. Um, so I wanna talk about the front setback a little bit. Um. So the 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 variance requested is is two feet in the front. So uh four Troy is pushed back twenty foot, twenty feet from the street. Um, and and uh this building is only pushed back eighteen feet. There's, there's a on the first floor, there's a two foot, um, the building comes out by two feet. Uh, on the second floor, the building comes out an additional three feet. So that's a total of five feet uh that is extended beyond four Troy. And then on the third story, uh, it gets pushed back again five feet um, to to be aligned with four Troy. Uh, I think uh during the last meeting, um it was said that the building is kind of uh like a a wedding cake, that it gets small, smaller as it goes up. Uh, it actually gets bigger first and then it gets smaller. So the the largest floor uh of this building is the second floor.
Okay, and um, just to to wrap things up, is it okay if I stop the screen share?
Yes.
Okay, um, and just to to wrap this up, could could you tell us about any problems you've had with flooding um in 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 your home? Or in neither of your homes?
Uh, yeah, eight oh, eight oh seven Summit uh has recently under heavy rains uh had had some uh flooding issues where we had some water in the basement. Uh, and and I am also concerned that the development of this property will will make that flooding worse.
Okay, um, okay, so I believe that concludes uh Mister Oz Turk's direct testimony and thank you uh for your patience, everybody.
Thank you.
I, if I may, I just have one question for Mister Oz Turk. Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mister Oz Turk. Would you agree that after the last time we appeared at the Pershing Field Neighborhood Association meeting that my client or architect and the design team specifically agreed to increase the setback at our rear yard, your side yard, from five feet to ten feet to address the concerns you have with light and air?
It, yes, it was increased, but it didn't.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'm, I would.
That's it. I have no further questions.
Okay, um, Miss Mister Oz Turk, uh, what have, how did, what what was your reaction to the ten, ten foot setback?
Well, well, we were flabbergasted when the five foot uh setback was presented to us in that neighborhood meeting. Uh, with the architect telling us that it could be actually three feet, that we should be, you know, quite, the 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 that five feet is pretty good. Um, after the neighborhood association, uh, you know, strongly objected. Um, they did say, well, do you think ten feet would be better? Um, and I said, yes, ten feet would be better, but but again, wasn't sufficient. I think the um you know, the those building designs should follow the zoning rules and give us the twenty feet that that the zoning requires.
Can I, can I ask a question? Mister Oster, in that meeting, did you propose a suggestion that was different than ten feet to the developer?
Well, we were always suggesting twenty because that's the 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 like the the zoning requires twenty. That was always my expectation when I bought the property at eight oh five Summit.
So what was the sequence here? Did they, they said five feet and you said no twenty? And then they said, how about ten? Can you give?
There wasn't really that type of negotiation, uh, where it was like back and forth, but we, we objected, we said, you know, uh, how how we felt about, you know, all our windows and our views and and the air and uh, being lost. And they said, we can do ten. And I said, that's better, but I didn't say you have to do twenty. And it wasn't like a back and forth negotiation about numbers.
And so my question was, um, when they said ten, you didn't say perfect, we're aligned. You, did you say?
No, I did not say.
We, that, that was my question. So so the the, there was a neighborhood association meeting. You said, we're we're not good with five. Um, the the requirement is twenty, we want twenty. And they said the best we can do is ten, and you said we're still not satisfied. Is that your understanding of the event?
I did mention that I was still was not satisfied with ten, yes.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mister Oz Turk. I think that concludes uh our presentation, although I would like a little time to sum up after the public comment.
Yes. So now we're, uh. Well, I guess, uh, Mister Pizzillo, before we get to come public, do you want to uh rebut any of this or?
I I do, I do, I thank you, counselor. And yes, I would respectfully request a a brief uh rebuttal case, uh, if if you may. Uh, and I would just ask to recall Richard Garber, the architect who can maybe clarify some of these, the items that were discussed with regards to the setbacks at front and of course along the rear.
Sure.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your full name for the record?
It's Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
Thank you.
My license is still current.
Yes, um, yes, great. So your license is current in the state of New Jersey. Uh, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, so. Go ahead, Rich.
I I would, I would just um respectfully say that and it's, you know, it's, it's interesting to hear this and it's awkward to see someone talk about my drawings and and this kind of thing. But but that said, um there was really a back and forth here, and there was really uh an intention to engage um, the community. There were multiple meetings with the community. Uh, my understanding is that um through the attorneys, there were some attempts to to reach out to um, this family, um, who who seemed like fine people. Um, and uh there, and and Chairman um Jacobs, I I, there was in that same PowerPoint, which I can put back up. There was a series of iterations that were shown that actually um described the uh, the uniqueness of corners in the R one, uh, first of all, um as well as uh the predominant setback on Summit Avenue, even though this portion of Summit Avenue is in the R one, to primarily be on the lot line. Right? So there is some uniqueness in terms of eight oh five and eight oh seven uh uh Summit uh as well as our project, uh, which I think is misaligned with the corner. Uh, and I I stated that before, but if you look at the the whole progression of Summit from um south of our block, uh, and that southeast of our block and and northwest of our block, right, we're on a diagonal. Uh, and 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 that's why there is a distinction that I think the neighbor tried to make in the PowerPoint with the the direction of the elevations. Um, that uh we are um being fairly contextual while still setting back. Um, with regard to the side yard lot line, um, uh, we are at ten. Uh, we arrived at ten after some back and forth with uh this neighbor and with uh, uh, the the neighborhood associations who we were before a number of times. Um, and uh, when we actually finally proposed ten uh and submitted it to the uh planning office, we did not hear either way from this neighbor. And I had honestly expected to. Um, I've known this neighbor, this neighbor knows how to get in touch with me and we did not hear from them. Um, so so I do, I do wanna say that um we thought, and I believe that we've satisfied uh, uh, or we thought we had satisfied the neighbor with the with the the ten feet. I will also clarify when I said three feet, um, because I I I don't want anyone to 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 misunderstand what I was saying. Um, the neighbor uh in question purchased eight oh five Summit, which is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. It has a series of windows on the lot line, right? What building code dictates one does uh, when there are pre-existing non-conforming lot line windows is provide a minimum setback of three feet. So that's where the three feet came. We have never proposed three feet. We did start with five feet uh over a portion of the building. Now it's ten feet straight up. Um, and I have some drawings that I can show to to prove that. Um, and I also have a uh another rendering that we made, if the board would like to see it, that that attempts to to uh uh, after hearing what I heard last time, we uh had proposed something and sent it into the planning office that I'm prepared to show tonight as well, that I think shows the kind of alignment of the building in the larger context uh of Summit Avenue.
Can I answer a question? Just cause I I wasn't here, I'm I'm kinda looking at at the the transcript and at Google Maps to get my bearings.
Yeah, me too.
What, what is, uh, so I'm looking at Summit Avenue. Um, what is the setback on the five-story building that is directly across the street?
May, may I show my screen?
Would you please, yes.
I'll be gonna share Google to start because we're there. And this is, this is not a drawing that I made. This is satellite imagery, but I I I, we've, it's been referenced a few times. So and I I prepared it just in case. So um, Francisco, can I share?
Yes, you should be able to share it.
Okay, great.
I mean, so.
And uh disregard all the tabs I have open, yikes. Um, so what you're seeing here is um, you're, that there's light traffic in this area. Um, you're seeing Summit Avenue, you're seeing the reservoir. Um, you're seeing our subject property here. And you're seeing the two houses in question here. And what happens is and I was talking about that diagonal before, Troy is on a diagonal from Summit. And so what that does is it creates a series of wedge-shaped blocks. And so wedge-shaped blocks, some, a lot of times have wedge-shaped buildings, right? And so what we see right across the street is a wedge-shaped building. What we see further down the street is a building that is a wedge. Um, what you see all along Summit is from uh all the way where my mouse is to the left, to all the way where my mouse is to the right are buildings that are on the street, right? It does so happen that eight oh five and eight oh seven, which I'm circling right now, are um, aligned. And um, this was done many, many, many years ago, when the tax maps, when the blocks were were subdivided. Uh, um, is actually aligned with the street, it's parallel to the street, which creates an angled location on Summit. You see that the building immediately adjacent to the north actually is corrected and aligned with Summit Avenue. So there's a real proximity a lot closer, by the way, art than our our proposed building. Uh, is this building that is, I believe, eight oh nine Summit is very, very close to eight oh seven Summit. That's because the alignments are getting resolved based on the lot lines, right? Now, so what we are proposing here is a building, and I can put up my drawings again after showing this, that sets back five feet from the lot line on Summit. And there's uh, there's some uh topography, right? There's a, there's a a modest berm. It's not a forest. It's not anything like that, but it's a berm that raises and that changes the elevation of Troy. So what we are doing is leaving that berm. We are accepting that berm. We are retaining it and we are setting back five feet uh here. Uh, but more or less attempting contextually to align with some of the other structures. Some of them are a lot bigger than what we're proposing, such as one of ones across the street. Some of them are about the same size or a little bit smaller, such as these ones to the north. But we are proposing to 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 kind of create that alignment, right? So that's, that's, that's one. Um, is that Chairman Jacobs, does that make the the site a little bit more clear? Or do you have any questions on that?
No, I think this visual is is very helpful in illustrating this.
Okay. What is, back, what is the setback? I think that was the original question that Commissioner Jacob said. What is the setback of the building across the street?
The setback of this building across the street is zero. It's on the lot line. On both Troy and Summit. And that's my point, that many of these buildings, including this one, this red one, including these houses, are zero.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, I I think thi- this illustrates the kind of the different nature that Summit Avenue is relative to like Troy Street is is a, or you know, these, these, you know, less, you know, if Summit Avenue is like the the key ar- arterial uh street, the others are are like, you know, s- smaller subsidiaries with with a more uh lower density residential feel. But but I'm not an architect or a planner, but uh, does that sound like somewhat coherent?
It sounds pretty good to me, Chairman. Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's accurate. Yes. Um, so the the other, I, and I just have one more uh exhibit that was sent into to the planning office because we didn't really have, we had a series of, in the last PowerPoint, we had a series of three D views that primarily showed just the iterations that we went through, including that arriving at that ten-foot setback, which is here. Uh, where I'm showing on the mouse. So I'm gonna just um very quickly stop and then reshare um, uh, another document and we can enter this. Um, no problem. Uh, that's the old one. One second. Let me get the, I had both of them up. Um, this is a a new rendering that we prepared and shared um, with um friend on Cisco and his team, uh, with some plans that clarified as well. Just put that up. So this, uh, if everyone can see this, actually shows, and I I won't go full screen, cause I think you can see.
Right, if you could, if you could just introduce, explain to the board and for Bridget's and Council's benefit uh, when you prepare what this is, when you prepared it, and then we could, uh, you know, adequately move it in as an exhibit.
Sure, sure. As I said before, um, uh, board, uh, what I realized is there was a lot of talk about context uh uh from the um uh, from the, uh, from from the the opposition planner. Uh, and um, I thought one of the things that I was, uh, I I regretted actually was that we didn't actually have one of these renderings, which we usually make. And so following our testimony on December eighth, uh, we decided to create this document, which was shared. Jared, I'm not quite sure when we shared it with the planning office, but um uh, we we produced this uh before the holidays, uh, but after the previous hearing. Um, this does not change the design. This is just a new depiction, by the way. So the building that's represented here is the building that was shared with the board. It's just a new rendering. And what we did is we rendered it at um a a wide angle sixteen nine, uh, like your flat panel on your wall. Uh, and what that shows is that stretch of Summit starting onto the left with that five-story building, which is zero lot line, which you see is considerably taller than anything around us. Um, our building, and you can see the berm here uh, that uh I'm running the mouse over right now. So that berm is that five-foot setback on the Summit side. And we also have the garage entry on Summit side now. And then you see uh the two houses in question, uh, eight oh five and eight oh seven. Uh, and then you start seeing some of the buildings further down Summit that realigns that um, zero or near zero setback. And so I I did wanna wanna enter this uh into evidence because I I do think it speaks to, um it speaks to what we've been, what we. It speaks to what we've been, what we've been debating here.
You have, excuse me, Mr. Garber, do you have a picture rendering the difference? The, 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 the space between eight oh, is that eight oh five and your, and your rendition? And that building on the side?
Yeah, so it also, go ahead, George, sorry.
I would just ask, uh, with any objection to, from Council or Ms. Hagiyanis moving this as into, uh, evidence as A3?
Um, I, I do wanna be able to ask Mr. Garber questions about it.
I asked if you have any objection regarding us moving into evidence, not whether you have any cross. Do you have any objection to it being?
No, 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 I don't.
I, I have a question, it's an objection, but could you please, Mr. Garber, um, speak to the proportion of this rendering? Because if the, if the. Uh, if you're saying it's five feet, that to me with the people walking looks to be much higher. Than that, and so I'm just a little concerned about.
Oh, it's, yeah, so.
Mr. Garber, uh, I, 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 I don't mean to interject, um, but I, I think that Sonia had an open question, so can you please address?
I'm sorry.
Yes, question if you haven't answered it already before Veronica's question.
Thank you, Josh.
So this is a plan. Um, that, and, and I, I, I do wanna also mention that the, there were a number of drawings that were going back and forth. Um, and so when I was, I, this is a, a, a graphic that is included here. That uh, shows very, very specifically the ten-foot setback, which you can see right here, ten-feet setback up above. Um, and this was prepared um, uh, some time ago, but I think that there was some confusion. I think Ms. Hyannis had asked me, um, because there was a previous iteration with a, a, a bump out. Uh, but, but as I stated, uh, so I, I think um. Uh, Commissioner Sonia, that, what, what, what I think this is, is uh, is showing is, this is this ten-foot slot here. That is between.
The houses.
Between our, our proposed building, which is here, I'm circling, and then their building, which is here. And what you see is this is the lot line. So their building is on the lot line. And they have a series of, I didn't know this, but it was said as, I think thirteen windows. Uh, I, I knew there were windows there, I didn't know the actual count. Uh, so there are thirteen windows, which from a building code, not a zoning, a building code point of view. We define as pre-existing non-conforming uh, uh, conditions, right? You can't put build a, built windows on building lot lines uh, for new construction. Um, I, I think this building was rehabilitated um, uh, with those buildings on the lot line and they were maintained. Uh, but I'm not quite sure to that, so, but, but um, I went, or but, but um, but, but point is that this setback here. Um. Is, if I zoom in and you'll see. At these dimensions, twenty feet here.
Okay.
Right, and so that window that um, the neighbor was bringing up before is actually this window here. This is also setback, and that's why elevations are a little deceiving if you don't, if you're not comfortable reading them. So that, that uh, this is a, a living dining room, right? And then uh, here is a ten-foot setback. Uh, between their structure and our proposed structure, running pretty much the entire length of their structure. The, a little bit of their structure is uh, is within that twenty feet. The primary portion of it is within that ten feet. And one of the other things that we actually did. Uh, uh, as part of the, uh, as part of the revisions we made. Is our building originally used to be fully wedge-shaped. So if you see what I'm doing with the mouse, we actually cut this notch out of it to align this frontage with the front of their building. So in addition to going from five feet to ten feet, we also said by doing this, you'll be able to get a little bit more morning sun. Um, um. Then uh, you would have been getting otherwise. Uh, there are a lot of trees there, so I'm not quite sure how much sun this, the, 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 uh, actually gets. There's gonna be street trees and so forth. Um, but so this is ten feet, so I hope that, that, I, I hope that that graphic answers.
That answer my question, yes, thank you so much.
Great, 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 okay. Um, and Ms. Park, you had a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my question was with the new rendering, just from a proportion standpoint, like I'm familiar with that area. And I, it doesn't look proportionate to me, but I, I could be wrong, I'm not an architect. So if you could just sort of.
Yep. So it's, it's always, so we're setting up a camera, you know, we're setting up a camera and, and attempting to capture um, something. Fill that you see with your eyes, so, so there, there could be a little um. Uh, distortion. Uh, but basically, what we're showing here very strongly is this berm. So this berm, which you see kind of coming up on a diagonal, um, you're a little bit lower, so looks a little deeper, I think. Um, is, is, is my sort of response to this, but where that is on our plan is this five feet. Now this five feet does not take into account the sidewalk. So you have to understand that that five feet is to our lot line and then the sidewalk starts. So with the sidewalk, that depth from the asphalt of the street is the sidewalk with plus. Um, that five feet, but that five feet is shown here, and if I zoom in, um. Uh, you see here that five-foot dimension on our plans, which I'm circling right here. Um, so, so that's what is, that is what we are um, proposing as the setback. And then, you know, a, a, a 2D measured drawing like this um, is inherently more precise than a rendering. Uh, but I do think that the rendering actually, again, captures, I'll put the rendering back up. The rendering, I think, captures the, the idea here, which is that there's a retaining wall, that retaining wall comes up, we have our setback. And then our building is proposed at three stories. Um, so it is uh, a little bit taller than, than the buildings here. But uh, you do see that we do align that second floor. Um. Where we try to align that second, and, and, and then the third floor sets back. So when I, when I said wedding cake, all that means is that we have a third floor that sets back. Uh, from our second, I can show you those two plans right here. This is our second floor plan, so this is our five-foot setback wall here. And then this is in our eighteen-foot setback wall, which has also been talked about. And then uh, on our third floor, what we highlighted in pink is the actual setback itself. So that the third floor um, is smaller in, in footprint, in, in area than um. Than the, the second floor, so that's what that means, and that's also clearly depicted here uh, in terms of the rendering. And I, I, I'll just point out again, um, based on that, that Google Earth thing I just had up, that we are proposing um, three stories above ground here. Um, but um, we are not uh, a towering uh, structure, especially given some of the context around us.
Especially given some of the. Richard, especially given some of the what?
Uh, some of the, some of the other uh, existing buildings around us, especially on Summit Avenue.
And Mr. Garber, you don't have the rendering that wraps around on the other side of the properties that are actually contesting this, do you?
A view from this side, I, I, you know, I don't, I mean, this is, I mean, this is the view that I think is, um, I think basically speaks to the building. But again, um, you know, let me just see from my previous PowerPoint, I might have something that uh, depicts that a little bit more. Again, for you, one second.
And Mr. Basillo, if you can identify what you wish to have marked as A3 for the record, so that it's clear?
Sure, so, uh, uh, the A3 would be the one-page rendering. This was previously marked as A2, that Rich has testified, the PowerPoint presentation is A2. The one-page rendering would be A3.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna just reshare um, one more, sorry, I should just be sharing my, I only have one monitor here tonight. Um, this is the, this is the, the, the PowerPoint that was, that um, was put up already. Um, the one that I spoke to. And one of the things that um, that I think um, I'll just call attention to the Board. Um, that on slides sixteen through twenty. And Ms. Park, I don't think this totally answers your question, but I think it's a little bit of a uh, helpful graphic, because it's a plan and 3D view together. This just shows the iterations um, from a taller building to a smaller building. Um, and then um, between November seventh, twenty twenty-one, which is what we have here. Uh, to um. May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, you see the difference in this corner that I'm circling here. So we go from uh, the whole corner to actually maintaining now a ten-foot setback between. And cutting that notch out so that we are actually consistent. So what I, what I spoke to on December um, uh, uh, eighth. Was that there were, um, I, I presented five iterations, there were actually more like nine iterations, but five consequent uh, uh, iterations. And um, uh, once this one was submitted, uh, we actually didn't hear. Uh, anything, uh, anything else from um, the neighborhood or, or the neighbors. And, and uh, you know, I, I hope that these five iterations that we show really um, um, uh, speak to the fact that we really did try to engage. And um, I know we can't make everyone happy, but we did um. We did attempt to hear concerns.
So I, I have nothing further from direct-wise uh, with regards to Mr. Garber. I, I don't know if the Board, you know, we can keep him up if the Commissioners have any additional questions for him. I know Ms. Hagiyanis would like a chance to ask him a few questions as well, but direct, I, I'm concluded.
I, I mean, I assume Ms. Hagiyanis wants to ask questions on what was just. Stayed.
I, I do have a few questions, yes, thank you, um. So, Mr. Garber, did you also redraw um, part of the architectural plan?
No, no, what I, what I did do is I, there, there were, as I, as I said before, there were a series of. Uh, uh, a number of iterations, and there were a lot of drawings going back and forth. So I think one of the plans that were shown last week. Last month, excuse me, showed a little bump out. On the second and third floor, which was a previous iteration. I had testified that we are going straight up, maintaining ten feet the entire way. And I, I believe you started asking me about the bump out. And so what I, what I did was I showed, I showed the intent, which is, as I said, ten feet straight up. That's it. I think you might have had an older plan, if I'm not mistaken, and as I said.
There, there's a new, since the last meeting, a new drawing was updated, uh, uploaded to the digital file folder with a revision date of. December ninth on it for this, that shows the second. And the third floor only, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand if, if that's a new.
Right, so that would, that would have been, so that was submitted on December ninth with the date of December, December ninth. But that, that drawing was actually part of the uh, design package. And, and I, and, and again, I think there were a lot of drawings that went back and forth, so I'm sorry if there was some confusion about that.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand what the Board's gonna be improving, because that, that wasn't in the file. At the, the last meeting was December eighth. And the drawing date is December ninth.
Right, right, so what we, what we, what I just testified to and what I just showed were the, the drawings that, that maintain. The ten-foot straight-up plan, which is what I testified to last, last time as well.
Okay, okay, um. And, and I, I, I don't think we marked that, the new, the newish drawing into evidence. Or do, do we have to? I don't, I mean, you, you showed it today on the screen for the first time, as far as I'm aware.
I could offer it in as an exhibit, I don't believe it's necessary, since it is on the data portal, is part of the record.
Okay, okay, um, okay, so going back to the 3D rendering. Um, you, you, you talked about the berm, are you? Is, there, there is an existing slope there, is that being excavated?
Well, it's, it's being excavated down where our building sits, but there will be a berm and a retaining wall maintained on Summit Avenue.
Okay.
But in order to walk over one another, I cannot get that.
I'm sorry, Bridget, yeah, in, in order to. Do construction, though, you, of, of the ground or the street-level garage. The existing berm would be excavated and then some, some soils being added back again after that?
Um, I mean, those are means and methods questions. I mean, I, I don't believe you have to demolish the entire existing berm, if that's what you're asking. Um, it can be um, a little bit more surgical than that. I, I don't think we would wanna disturb, in, in, and I'm not a contractor, I'm an architect, but generally when we build. Or when, when others build our intent, or if, if you will. Um, we wanna disturb as much, as little, excuse me, virgin soil as possible, right? So what we're going to do is we are going to um, cut into the berm where we have the garage opening. And cut into that berm where we have the stair going up. But we are going to, uh, I would imagine, do our best to not disturb uh, as much of it as, as possible. Uh, or, or let me restate that, we are going to disturb as little as we, as we, as we have to. Uh, to, to, to get this building built, should it be approved.
Hmm, okay, and um. I'm, could we pull up the, the 3D rendering again?
Sure.
While you're pulling that up, um, Francisco, I, I'm sure, because there's more than sixty people on the call. That there are, there's an interest from the public in, in giving comments. So can you coordinate, uh, so as not to confuse things, um. Please don't raise your hands until we announce public comment. Uh, but we will absolutely announce public comment and announce the rules for public comment.
Okay, um, so, so Mr. Garber, um, on, on this. Rendering, could, could you show me where eight oh five and eight oh seven Summit are?
Over here.
Are, are those my clients' buildings?
This is, this is the building that's been rebuilt, yeah. This is, this is actually, and it's, this is why I think elevations are a little bit tricky. Um, their building actually has a, a kind of semi-circular kind of portion that bumps out. I showed that, you saw that in the um, in the overhead Google aerial that I showed the other day. So they, they don't have a flat facade on, on, on Summit. They actually protrude a little bit as well. Um, and so this is, um, again, renderings are um. As accurate as we can make them, but I, you know, they're not, uh, they're, they're, they're renderings, right? They're, they're depictions. Um, so we believe that you will see portions of the building from this view, which is across on the reservoir side, on the park side, excuse me. Looking um, uh, north and west. And you will see portions of their building, especially since we've cut back. This proposed building, as I just testified a few minutes ago.
So, so my clients have two buildings at eight oh five and eight oh seven, and I, I. I, I only, I, I don't think I see eight oh seven or eight oh nine.
Yeah, I think that there, so the, the, the red building is the building right adjacent to us, and then the other building, and again, this is. Uh, it's a rendering, uh, and we're not, it's not a rendering of their buildings, it's a rendering of our proposed building. Um, but it's, uh, if I uh, just look at the, I'm just looking at the, this street view again. Right, so the, the red building is what you see, and then the um. The grayish building is here. And then there's another building, uh, it's, I mean, it's, it's. Yeah, I mean, thi- this building uh, that I'm circling here.
Uh-huh.
I, is, is eight oh, is eight oh nine, I believe, but again, rendering.
Okay, so it looks like eight oh seven's missing from the rendering.
No, 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 excuse me, this is eight oh five, and then seven, see. No, this is eight oh seven, and this is eight oh five, and then there's another building immediately adjacent to it that you see. I think they're both there.
Okay, if, if you, if we, if we went to your PowerPoint, I mean, I don't know, it, it looks much, much different. You can, you can see the, that, you can see the succession of Billy, buildings along Summit very clearly in here. There's three buildings, there's a red building, eight oh five, a green building, eight oh seven, and then the gray building, eight oh nine. And I, I'm, I'm not sure what I'm looking at, but okay, um. Uh, on Troy, I had a question about the, the proportion of Troy Street. Do you know how wide Troy Street is?
Uh, not off the top of my head, many, many of these streets are sixty feet wide. Uh, not off the top of my head. Many, many of these streets are sixty feet wide, but I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Yeah, that just, it's a kind of a small street. So it looks, it looks like a boulevard in the rendering. And then it, it doesn't, there don't seem to be any parked cars in the, in, in the rendering. Is there a reason?
We wanted, because we wanted to show our building and we wanted to show that condition of the berm coming up to our building. And we wanted to show the relative proportion of our building, which is three stories above the berm as has been testified. So it is a bit, a bit taller than the structures as you go west on Troy Street. But as I showed in the the Google satellite view before, is not a particularly tall building when you look at the context of Summit Avenue with those zero setbacks.
Okay. And, and the way so in your plans, you, you showed that to Troy was, had an eighteen foot setback and a, along Troy and that for Troy had a twenty foot setback. But in, in the rendering, it, it, it looks like to Troy is, is set back even further than for Troy.
No, I mean, again, this is the, the visual of the rendering. I mean, our, I'm not, I'm not attempting to somehow undo anything that I've said. I mean, our setbacks are setbacks. We are proposing an eighteen foot setback in the front. And the predominant setback on to Troy immediately next to us is twenty feet. But if you look at the block, it ranges from somewhere around less than twenty feet to a little bit over twenty feet. So we thought eighteen on the corner was appropriate.
And then, and then on the, okay, thank you. And then on the, on the I guess I'm just on the perspective that I've I, I, what, I don't know if they're, you know, I, I, there's different types of three D perspective, but um, this building, the, the way the building across Troy on Summit, I think it's, is it seven eighty seven summit? Is there, is there something, because it's in the foreground of this, does that make that building look even bigger in relation?
I mean, it's, I mean, this is created based on the tax map that is public record in, in, in the city, right? So that's, that's how we usually start these drawings to kind of set up the relationships. And the tax maps are numerically correct. They could have modest, very modest graphic discrepancies, but they're more or less correct.
They're not three dimensional though, the tax maps, right?
No, no, they're two D drawings. They set up, they set up the dimensional relationship between streets and lots in the city. That's what the tax map does.
No, that, that in, in two dimensions, but then I'm just asking if there's, I guess, if, if putting this in three dimensions, when you have the, the summit building in the foreground, if that creates some sort of distortion or doesn't give you a real idea of how the heights relate to one another in these two buildings.
No, it's a, it's a perspective and it, it, it's, it does show how the heights relate. Because if you remember, Summit is a, a street that, I mean, if Summit is straight, then Troy is the diagonal or vice versa, however you want to think about it. But what we're doing is we're aligning the long portion of our building, which is the summit frontage with, with seven eighty seven summit and some of the other structures on the block. That's, or, or not on the block, excuse me, in the vicinity.
And how?
Yeah. And so what you're seeing, I don't, I don't know how tall seven eighty seven is. I, I've, I've not, I, I don't dare try to measure it, to be honest with you, but it's a five story building. It's a five story masonry building. It's wedge shaped. I showed it before. I can show it again if you'd like. But it's considerably taller, considerably taller than, than anything on Troy Street, including our proposed building.
And how, how tall is your proposed building?
Uh, I'm going to refer to the PowerPoint and if you, and, and just because I, I feel like I'm, you know, I, I testified to this exactly. Our building is four stories and that includes the basement. And forty three feet, eleven inches measured from average grade. However, if you measure from our berm from ground, right? Uh, we are at thirty four feet and two inches, which is fairly is, is consistent, not fairly, is consistent with the R one.
Okay. And would it, would it be fair to say that the, the new proposed building is taller than the adjacent buildings on Troy and on Summit?
Yeah. Did someone just speak? I, uh, no. Uh, the, 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 I just showed a, a, a map. Excuse me, the goo, excuse me. I just showed that someone was speaking in the background. I, I don't know what that was. I just showed the, the Google, Google Maps satellite that shows there are buildings that are considerably taller than what we are proposing on Summit Avenue.
I'm, I'm asking specifically about the adjacent structures.
Right. So the adjacent, so across the street, that structure is two stories taller out of the ground. And behind us on Troy Street proper, the mid block, which, which basically the building immediately after our starts a mid block rhythm, we are a corner. Those buildings are all approximately two and a half stories. So we are.
So if you didn't understand my question, I was specifically asking about the relationship between to Troy and for Troy and to Troy and eight oh five.
Right. So two, so for Troy is a, and I, I don't know how tall off the top of my head. I, I, I don't measure those buildings, but, but I, I haven't measured those buildings. But to Troy is taller than for Troy, for Troy being a mid block condition. That's a, approximately a two and a half story building with a basement. If we count the basement, it's a three and a half story building, right? Basements count. But we are proposing a building that's taller. And I think the rendering shows that. I mean, we're, we're, we've not said otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can, can I ask a question? And, and Ms. Hajiyanis, I apologize for interjecting, but I, I kind of got the impression you were trying to ask these questions, but didn't ask them exactly. When you were talking about the tax map, questions I had looking at this rendering were I was curious as to why you were showing this particular time of day and that does light refraction in at dusk change the appearance of images depending on where they appear in, in a picture? And to what extent is there just, is there further distortion, if any? Or, or otherwise, what would be the intent of having all the lights on in this building?
Very simply, Chairman Jacobs, it's, it's an aesthetic preference of mine. I like renderings at dusk. Because what I think it does is it begins showing that the buildings are not these heavy blocks, but they are fairly porous. This building will not throw uh, uh, like too much light, right? I think that that will be controlled, but what I, what we are trying to show here is that um, this is a new building. We don't build buildings in twenty twenty three like we did in the nineteen thirties or forties. And therefore we can take on larger windows. You'll notice that we are showing larger windows and this I, I testified to this last time, I think. But the larger windows are all oriented to the park across the street. They are not oriented so much to the, the inner lots. I mean, we do have some windows on the inside of the, you know, the interfacing portions of the building. But the building really is set up to face east to, to the park and to views east downtown and so forth, right? And that was something that we, we talked about. There's been a lot of discussion about to Troy as an existing structure, really operating like a, like a mid block structure, right? It faces Troy Street. It doesn't really have a presence on Summit. And I think that that actually is inconsistent contextually with many of the other buildings on Summit, such as the five story one that we were talking about before. So we're trying to be mindful of the, the scale of Troy. We still have a fairly narrow part of our building on aligned with Troy Street. But what we're trying to do is expose the, the, the frontage of the building on Summit as, as the building. The lighting is, I don't, I don't know if you, if, if you have a, if you have a negative opinion of it, I apologize. It's just, it's a preference of mine when we make these renderings that we do these dusk renderings because they ha- they happen to show the building as not solid. And, and I think that that's important. These, these are livable spaces, people live in these buildings. They participate in that kind of way.
I wasn't giving a positive or negative view. I, I was, I was, I was trying to see it and Ms. Hajiyanis, my apologies if these were totally irrelevant lines of questioning. We're, we're, we're going towards what I thought you were trying to ask about perspective.
Yeah. I mean, my, my question was because I, I think the applicant has relied so heavily upon the building across the street and you, you asked about across Troy and you asked about the setbacks of that building. And it just, in this picture, I just, I, I to me, it looks gigantic. And I'm just trying to figure out if because it's, it's, it's in the foreground of the picture that, that is causing that appearance.
Well, it's two stories bigger. It's two stories larger out of the block, right? So it is, it is gigantic in that, if you want to call it gigantic, I guess two stories is gigantic. But it's also closer to your eye. And it's, so it's more foregrounded.
Yes, that, that, that was, that was my question.
Yeah. And I guess, and I I question whether to hold my tongue here, Ms. Hajiyanis, but I, I'm wondering, you know, what, what type of point you're trying to make and, and certainly make any point you want, but I, I think it, it supports your argument that it looks big by saying that there, the way that the picture is drawn makes it look extra big. And, and you are trying to illustrate that it looks extra big. So if anything in context, I would think that the applicant would want to make it look less big and not support the argument you're trying to make. But, but I, I don't know. I don't want to just speak in a circular manner.
Okay. Yeah. My question, I have a question. Um, Mr. Garber, you are talking about the orientation east. Are there views of Manhattan from this new property?
I think there will be. And there are some trees that we have to look at and, yeah, so it's, it's, you know, e- even with the best kind of imaging, you're, you're still kind of guesstimating a little bit. But you know, the, the topography of the city basically begins sloping down. And then you have, you know, the Palisade, I mean, the, the Palisade, which cuts all the way up into, you know, New York State, which is really quite interesting. And so you will have views to downtown and, and beyond in, in this proposed building, as do I suspect. I've not been in many of these buildings on Summit Avenue that are in question.
I, I guess my follow up question to that is, since we haven't been speaking about it of being in front of some of the other properties, are you actually with this building going to prevent views that currently exist?
I don't really believe so. And the reason why is because, as I said, all of the, all of the, the buildings on Troy after ours, starting with for Troy are oriented as conventional, like typical mid block two family houses. So in other words, they face the street. They have very small windows on their side yards, which is, which is also typical. And so I would imagine that even for Troy, and I can't say for certain, but I would imagine that even the, the house that we're proposing to demolish here to make way for this structure should be approved. It already is, is keeping for Troy from having, you know, direct views. But because the, of the angle of Troy Street with relation to Summit, I believe that the front yards of four, maybe even six and eight can have southerly southeastern views that we would not be blocking at all. So those views will be maintained. And so, and, and those are certainly views that are, are probably better given the, the better meaning that, that there's more opportunity there, given the, 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 the sort of architectural configuration of those structures to the, to the west of us. And so we're not, we're not going to, we're not obstructing any view from the front facing portion of any of those houses.
Ms. Hajiyanis, sorry. I, I didn't mean to cut off, cut you off. Did you have any further questions for Mr. Garber?
No, thank you. I'm, I'm finished.
I have one more question, if I may. I was just, you show your rendering in Dawn like Jacob was saying. But I would like to, is that the color of material you're going to use in the daytime? I'd like to see it. Are they the same colors that you're going to use in your rendering and when, when you do your, your project? What is the coloring of that?
Yeah. So I'm going to put up, if, if it's okay with everyone, I'm going to put up the other PowerPoint, which actually showed this stuff. Uh, hold on one second and I'll just re, re, re testify this stuff for everyone's. So this is the old PowerPoint that the neighbor had actually spoken about. Uh, none of our deviations have changed. And I, I, so I showed these, these views before the, the iterations of our building. And then I showed these elevations. And so what we have here is a manganese iron spot brick, which is at the base. And we're proposing also that manganese iron spot brick, which is, it's a handsome brick. It's, it's got flexible kind of purply in it. It, it, it picks up the sun a little bit. Also at the retaining wall. And then what we're proposing on the upper portion of the building is a cementous fiber panel, cementitious fiber panel, excuse me. So if I slide over, you see that we have, maybe this view is good. We have a slightly darker cementous panel. It's a very smooth, very nice panel, my opinion, which is color night mist. It's this kind of darker gray. And then behind it, we have a actually, this is a, excuse me. So this is a, a kind of smooth trowel stucco in the rear, in the rear, that's a little bit lighter. So when you see these things all together, what you're, what you're seeing is a kind of palette of darks and lights that I think will pick up the sun. Uh, because we are going to get a lot of great sunlight. I mean, this lot, this lot gets a lot of great sunlight, which is amazing. And the views are amazing as I've talked about, because we have the park right across the street.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question about unit mix. It looked like, I'm looking at these draw, the drawing, but I, I don't know if it's the most current. I mean, some of these look like very small sizes for two bedrooms or one bedrooms. I wonder how you got to the point where you are on these sizes. And, you know, I don't know the feeling of other people on the board, but I don't know if there'd be any consideration to have three bedrooms or larger size units.
I'm gonna, and I should just share my total scram. I'm sorry about that. I'm going to go back to the, the, the PowerPoint that was just entered with those plans. I want to just zoom into those and I can go through them with you. I mean, I think, you know, we've, we've presented. I mean, if, if the board will remember, not everyone, you know, that we presented a, in the middle of COVID, a, a, a two bedroom proposal at where the bedrooms were five hundred and thirty two feet, very small, but we made them work spatially. And those smaller units were actually quite, you know, that the price point per market would actually be a little bit lower. If I zoom in here, I think, you know, size is one thing for sure, one hundred percent. And I'm, I'm, I'm sensitive to it too. And what we have seen is that units are starting to get larger again because people are spending more time in their units. This, the design process with this started for COVID, actually. So some of that is left. But, you know, this type A unit, which is the, the big two bedroom plus den is a very, very large unit. It's one thousand one hundred twenty four feet. So this is really a kind of family unit with a separate kind of play area, if you will, or something like that. And, and you get a sense of how the, the bedroom bathroom kind of things work. So this has the bedrooms on the front. And then as we go over And then as we go over. Uh, and, and again, these are the units on the second floor, we have a one-bedroom unit that is seven hundred and thirteen square feet, I think that's about. Average, I would say nowadays, uh, what we're, what we're doing in terms of our, our residential structures. And then we have a two-bedroom unit here that's seven hundred ninety-nine, call it eight hundred feet, so this is, I, I would say. You know, one could say that it's a little bit smaller, this unit um, uh, was actually. Um, subject to uh, being made smaller because of this. Sort of cutaway that we made, so as I zoom in here, um, Chairman Jacobs, if you could see. This is eight oh seven Summit here, so what we did is we cut this notch out to make sure that they were getting light and air entering this way. Um, and that we weren't blocking any of their front-facing windows, their side-facing windows never faced east anyway. So you couldn't be looking out one of these side yard windows and look toward Manhattan, for instance, or something like that. But um, so this, this unit actually has gotten a little bit reworked, um, but this is um. You know, for better or for worse, this unit got a little bit smaller in, in some of these iterations, so this is an eight hundred square foot um, two-bedroom unit. Um, it works. Um, it's definitely more of an efficiency two-bedroom. Um, and I, I do actually think that um, some of the smaller two-bedroom units, you know, the price point. Um, for what it's worth is, is, is gonna be a little bit lower. Uh, and, and there are, you know, there are many instances where people um, uh, you know, people need these kinds of units, so I, I do think that. Having a range of unit sizes, which we try to do in our buildings um, is. Um, is equitable, frankly.
So your words, not mine, uh, you wanna put three-bedroom units uh, in this on the top floor. Um, to have more unit mix.
So three-bedroom, these are two-bedroom units on the top, so this is the top floor.
Mm hmm, so there'd be more unit mix, so currently there's. Uh, it's six, is it six one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms or? Yeah.
Uh, let me just confirm that, so we have two ones and six twos currently.
Okay, so you'd have more mix if you had a three-bedroom, because then currently you have zero. If you added more than zero, you'd have more than zero.
So you're saying, you're saying, would we consider a three-bedroom up top, like maybe a three-bedroom and a two-bedroom?
Well. Yeah, or you could, I mean, the easiest way of looking at this is to split the one-bedroom, but I'm not an architect and have two, three bedrooms.
Uh. Yeah, I'm not sure it would totally work that way, but, but um, yeah, I mean, we can. I, I think we would absolutely consider that. I think that that's not a. It's not a, a, a bad suggestion, I mean, obviously I'd have to talk, we, uh, you know, Gerard would have to con- confer with the, the, the owner. On that. But yes, I mean, we could certainly. Um, what I, what I think we would probably do is because this two-bedroom unit is quite large. Uh, this is the, this is about a nine, nine hundred square foot two-bedroom unit, it's a little bit smaller on the third floor because of the setback. Um, we could either give a portion of this one bedroom to the two-bedroom, making it a three and maybe have a studio leftover. You know, so we have one studio and one three-bedroom in the mix as well, I mean, we could, I, 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 I don't have a problem looking at that. Um, and certainly, um, certainly, you know, if you uh. Uh, if that was a condition of, of approval, for instance, I mean, we, we, sure, I mean, we could.
I mean, I don't know if you'd, if, if, I mean, if we're changing your plans, if, if you would want to, you know, submit different plans altogether, I just know. I, I was looking at the third floor and it looked like. You had a two-bedroom that was eight hundred and ninety-two square feet, one that was eight hundred and ten square feet and a one-bedroom was six hundred and thirty-nine square feet. Whereas the two bedrooms, you showed the walkthrough two-bedroom on the first floor. Uh. But there's. Two, there are bigger two-bedrooms, there's no, you pointed the one that's eleven twenty-four and the one on the first floor is ten thirteen and there is. You know, the two then smaller ones, one at seven ninety-eight that you showed us and one that's eight forty-six. So I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to think creatively and you're right, you know, there's no studio in this either. So maybe.
Yeah, I mean.
If you have a three-bedroom and a studio.
I, I don't think that that, I think that that's a, a nice idea, but I, I do, I would, just to reiterate something I said and I, I. As you know, I always appreciate these, these conversations, I like thinking about this stuff. I, I, I do think that um. We have shown in many of the buildings we've executed in the city. Um, a range of unit sizes that uh, speaks to the market price of those units, right? And so a two-bedroom that is. Eight hundred square feet is going to be um, more affordable to someone. Needing a two-bedroom than say a two-bedroom that is one thousand one hundred and twenty-four square feet, you know, and I, and I think that that. That um, distinction um. In a building like this, in a neighborhood like this, could, could be, could be useful. Um, but we, I, I think um. I think we could, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we should stop here. Then now we're getting into something well beyond the application. And I think Bridgette needs a break. I think might be finished with this topic and maybe we should go on to the public.
Uh huh.
Uh, but if, if, first and foremost, I think Bridgette needs a break.
Okay.
Why don't we, it's eight thirty. Uh, what time would you like to come back? Ten minutes?
Five minutes.
Mm hmm, that's fine.
What's fine. Now Bridgette, what's fine for you, you're the one.
Eight and a half. Why don't we just do ten?
Okay, see you all soon.
Eight forty, see you then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, um.
So Mr. Chairman, do you think, you think we should just take the. O's talks off the screen because I'm, I'm losing my perspective of who's here. Who's not.
Yes, yes.
Sure.
You don't need, and I think we. Could we be up to the public now?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask Mr. Pizzillo. Anything else or can we proceed to the public?
Yes, Chairman, uh, proceeding in the public is fine with me, I would just, again, just a few minutes at the end to, to sum up. But absolutely, let's open to the public.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, we're gonna open to the public, uh, and, and this is concerning um. This uh. Specific application.
I'm gonna look.
So only to Troy Street, um. Ahmed, do you wanna be the timekeeper?
Yes, please.
Okay, so people, uh, anyone from the public, you have three minutes, um. But certainly. Don't feel that you have to uh, speak for three minutes, a lot of times you can probably speak for ten seconds and, and we'll know exactly what you're saying. Um. Then uh, Francisco, are you going to give some instructions for how people can uh, tell you they wanna speak?
Yeah, uh, so if you do wanna speak, please press the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen if you're using a computer. Um, if I do see a few individuals with their cell phones. Um, please press, I believe it's star. Nine? Please correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't know. Sorry.
Um, I do see lots of hands raised, so I'm gonna start promoting the first hand. Deborah McWilliams promoting.
So Francisco, you've announced to the public that if you wanna speak, um, raise your hands, Ahmed's gonna be the timekeeper. And he'll let you know when you have one minute remaining. It's eight forty-three, um. If, if you don't, i- if people from the public have not raised their hands by um, eight fifty-five. Um. At that point, we will, you will not be able to raise your hand to speak, so that gives people twelve minutes. Um, to, to figure out if they wanna speak or not and notify it to you.
And, and just to correct the record, if you're calling to gain access, you must dial star nine to raise your hand. And then star six once you're in uh, the panelist section. And Deborah McWilliams has been promoted, so if you can please unmute yourself.
Okay.
You should turn your video on as well.
Okay. Can you see me now?
Uh, no.
Yes.
Got it.
There you go.
Thank you.
Sorry, apologies.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
Thank you, please state and spell your full name for the record.
First name is Deborah, D E B O R A H. Last name, Mac Williams, M C W I L L I A M S.
Thank you.
Thank you, please, first feel fair proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Please listen. As a resident of the early nineteen hundreds building directly across the street. I have been awakened many mornings by the loud sound of blasting vehicle horns. Each day I observe the traffic congestion and backups, the heavy pedestrian flow and parking issues. These are partially caused by the several schools in the area, including PS twenty-six, MS seven and Saint Joseph's School for the Blind. Along with the newly upgraded reservoir, the Pershing Field Recreation Center and Residence. Adding a multi-story, multi-unit building along with a parking garage where there presently is none. With a curb cut and only one egress for entering and leaving the garage and having sightlines that are blocked. Due to obstructions such as parked cars, the curvature of Summit Avenue, street signs and trees, et cetera. Will cause even more dangerous vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow on the narrow roadway and sidewalk. Which occurs several times per day and further intensify these issues. Furthermore, the proposed building and parking garage will encourage personal vehicular ownership. And worsen the already difficult parking situation. As the non-peak and weakened public transit schedules are not robust and may not accommodate physical challenges. Moreover, the local shopping district may not provide everything to satisfy lifestyle needs and wants. And you must travel outside of the neighborhood or to other municipalities. Additionally, neither the proposed building nor the parking garage blend into the neighborhood scape in any quality that creates balance. Harmony and a pleasing appearance. Frankly, the neighborhood does not need this type of building and parking garage. As a twenty-three-year resident of the Heights, I walk these blocks and cross these streets on a regular basis. And know firsthand the issues that are present. I am highly distressed and alarmed about the negative effects. This proposed oversized dense building and parking garage will further aggravate in this area. As a senior citizen, there are many instances when I feel safer skydiving from fourteen thousand feet. Than crossing the streets in the area. It will become even more dangerous to do so if this proposed project is approved as presented. Do we really need oversized, multi-story, multi-unit buildings with or without parking garages? That do not blend into the area and magnify existing pedestrian traffic and parking issues. On every corner of every block in every neighborhood in Jersey City? Would you want this in your neighborhood? I ask all of you to vote no to the requested zoning variances for a building and garage that does not belong or fit. On this lot, on this corner, on this block, in this neighborhood in Jersey City. Thank you for your time and attention and happy new year.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Promoting Janki.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Janke, um, I'm a registered architect with licenses active in New York and Pennsylvania. Um, Richard, you used to be a professor at NJIT where um, I also went to school. I have a master's degree in environmental building design and I teach.
I cannot see her.
Janki, first you have to turn on your video.
Is it required? Yes. Newborn on maternity leave, so um.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, um, I just wanted to.
You, you have.
Just wait for the record reporter, she has to swear you in.
Okay.
For the record and your address, okay?
Gotcha.
Go ahead, Bridgette.
Okay, I can't see it, but do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Uh, Janke, J A N K I, last name V Y A S.
Thank you.
Okay. So I just happened to be on the call because um, I was calling in for seventy-four Bower Street, I grew up at seventy-two Bower Street. And I just stayed on because this is a very similar case um, that we will probably be back on for in two weeks. Um. I teach high-performance building design at the University of Pennsylvania, where I believe Richard Garber is also a professor. And I just wanted to add um, some comments about the daylighting and access to daylighting. Um, zoning was enacted first for the purpose of. Daylighting and a ten-foot setback at four stories with a southern exposure, blocking a southern exposure. Is going to block all of the daylight available to every single window at eight oh seven. Um. Summit Ave. It's not going, that little notch that was shown in the plans on Summit Avenue as a setback for allowing daylight is not going to work because. Summit Avenue is east-facing, the sun angles on the east are going to be super low. Right, so the sun's not gonna be high enough to bring daylight into that space, especially when you have the reservoir across the street. Blocking that lower sun angle. By the time the sun gets to the south, it's going to be blocked completely by this proposed development at Troy Street. I have, you know, I don't have any specific like relationship with anyone. Um, on the opposing side, but I do have expertise in daylighting, this is what I teach at the University of Pennsylvania. To masters of architecture students and masters of environmental building design students. And this is one of the things that I teach is how to. Design with equitable daylighting and I can say with certainty without having. Um, a three-D rendering or anything, just seeing the size and proposed scale that. All daylight access is going to be blocked and it is going to impact the occupants of eight oh seven Summit Avenue. Um. Negatively, they're not gonna have the daylight and access to air, it's also gonna create a microclimate with regards to wind patterns when you go from. Two-story buildings at the corner lot. Um, to four-story and taking up the entire lot the way it's shown. Um. So yeah, that's all I wanted to add and I would hope that the architect and the developer would reconsider. Perhaps that setback that's done on the third floor is also extended around to the inner side lots. Uh, the inner side um, property lines instead of just on the side that's on Summit, so a setback on. On the. Eight oh seven side and on the four. Troy Street side at the higher levels would help daylight access down to eight oh seven. But as shown, any claim that there is daylight availability is not going to be accurate.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting. Lorraine.
Hi, this is Lorraine.
Lorraine, we need to see you, you have to turn on your video.
I'm trying.
Yeah. Don't ask me for help, I don't know how to do it.
Let's see, okay, I got it, start video, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Lorraine, L O R R A I N E, Laurie, L A U R I E.
Thank you.
So as a resident of fourteen Troy Street, family owned the house since nineteen twenty-nine. Um, I, this building just. It's gonna overcrowd the neighborhood, I now currently have a six-store, a six-unit building in my backyard. That was approved three years ago. I have a hundred-foot driveway next to me. And it, 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 to have another building that large. Will just overcrowd the neighborhood, wh- where are all these people gonna go? Um. Another thing is. Why does it have to look like an office building? Everything does not need to look like an office building, this is. The Heights, we have two-family residents. It just not fit into the neighborhood as other people have said, um. My main concern is, just like with the building in my backyard. After it was built, everybody that comes here from the city. Has stated, how did it ever get approved? It's ten feet from my property line. The lights in the house shine into my yard, into my house, I have to use blackout curtains in my bedrooms upstairs because the lights are constantly on. The mayor was here and Tanya was here at one point and said that that building on the corner. They are not supporting it.
So if they don't support it, how will this, how will the council support something like that being built? So I kind of hope it doesn't get passed, so that's really all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me. I hope it works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Kern. No.
Hi, Kern. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure, it's Kern, K.E.R.N., last name Weisman, W.E.I.S.S.A.M.A.
Thank you.
So I'm here speaking on behalf of the, both as a neighbor, but more so as the current chair of the RNA Development Committee. So we are a sister neighborhood association, and we've had challenges with buildings like this in our section of Heights as well. The three major things I want to bring up, one are that the scale and density of this project. If you look at the recent, you look at the recent meetings that Planning has held for the neighborhood about the new proposed R1 density-based zoning. There's been two walkthroughs, several meetings in the Heights. The proposed density that is coming, you know, according to planning, that is coming to the Heights in the R1 area, this project exceeds that density quite a bit. So it's tough for me to understand how, you know, this, this project fits into the neighborhood if the very density that is being proposed here and de facto that they're requesting a use variance, is, I mean, the scale is just way off. And so that feeds into the, you know, the negative impact, right? And if you look at where Planning's head is, you know, in terms of what they're thinking for the future of the Heights and the R1 across the city, they're saying that this is too dense for the area. So I think that really needs to be considered. The other thing is, the design standards are routinely ignored. The design standards are pretty clear about what must happen in terms of development. And this project just blatantly ignores the design standards and doesn't
A minute ago.
Yep, any context whatsoever for the existing and surrounding neighborhood. You know, it was, it was very interesting to note that, that building was left off the rendering. I don't know if that was on purpose or by mistake, but, you know, it further, you know, when you look at that rendering, for me, it actually promotes the opposite viewpoint, that this doesn't fit there at all from a design standpoint. And then the, the other point I want to make is about density by, zoning by variance, which is expressly illegal in New Jersey. And if this was to be granted, essentially, given the issues with the positive and negative criteria, I think, here, you would essentially be zoning by variance in a very blatant way. And I think that's really wrong and not, you know, certainly not a good precedent to be setting in the city. So I'm encouraging you, half of the neighborhood association, to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Thanks, Kern.
Promoting Cynthia Scott.
Hello?
Hi, Cynthia. Are you able to turn on your camera?
I thought I had. Let me see. Wait.
Now it's on.
Okay, good.
Raise your right hand to be sworn.
No, no, I've not been, should I swear because sworn in?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure. My name is Cynthia Scott, C.Y.N.T.H.I.A., Scott, S.C.O.T.T. Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Cynthia Scott. I'm a board member of the Pershing Field Neighborhood Association, and I just want to start off with a few observations from the discussion we had tonight. The, the, the project on the table here is a 2 Troy Street. I know the entrance on the proposed building that they want to put is on Summit Avenue, but I think we need to keep in mind that it is a 2 Troy Street address and what was referred to as a side yard where the 10-foot setback was talked about earlier. That's really the backyard of 2 Troy Street. So I think that needs to be, you know, thought about. The other thing is, the rendering that we saw tonight, which was from December 9th, which was after the last meeting, it really doesn't include anything on the roof about showing what structures are up there. It kind of made it look flat. I thought it was a misrepresentation, in my opinion. I'm not an expert of the roof and what that will look like when the building is built. And now I just have my prepared comments are, I have a safety, I think there's a safety concern with the curb cut for this site. It is very close to a crosswalk at a very busy intersection on Summit Avenue and Troy Street. There are three schools in this immediate neighborhood, St. Joseph's School for the Blind, the Patricia Noonan Elementary School, and the Franklin Williams Middle School. I have seen teachers from the School for the Blind walking with their students in this area. Also, many children and adults use the crosswalk at the corner of Summit Avenue and Troy Street. Pershing Field Park with its ball field, skating rink, and pool is directly across the street from this proposed site. That area has heavy vehicular and pedestrian traffic, especially when there are sporting and other events in the park. The reservoir site, when it is fully operational, will also increase the vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Currently, there are pedestrian crossing signs with lights at this crosswalk. Many drivers do not stop for people who are waiting to cross Summit Avenue. The city has also painted an area in the street on Summit Avenue and Troy Street in front of the site, which seems to be ready for the corner white poles. Adding an additional portal for more traffic will only exacerbate the problems this intersection. Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Adding an additional portal for more traffic will only exacerbate the problems this intersection already has. I urge you to consider these safety concerns, especially given the number of children in the area and the overall scope of this project, which does not enhance the neighborhood for the people who already live here. I encourage you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Promoting Amanda.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is Amanda Levy. Can I start or?
Spell that, please.
I'm sorry?
Please spell your name.
Amanda Levy, A.M.A.N.D.A.L.E.V.I.E.
Thank you.
Good.
I can go ahead. Great. My name is Amanda Levy. I'm a resident of H. Troy. I've been a resident of the Heights and Jersey City for 13 years. I've been a resident of Troy Street for six years. There's a lot of things that I wanted to point out today, but one of the things that I keep hearing a lot has a lot to do with the area versus like Troy Street specifically. We keep talking about how this development is normal for this area, but I would also like to point out that Troy Street is unique in its own situation. It is only one block long. It is within two blocks of three different school zones, a full park with a renovated playground, four basketball courts, two tennis courts, outdoor programming for children, adults, and seniors. There is a walkathon in which disabled students walk along Summit and Troy Street as part of a fundraising opportunity every May in the, in the spring. There are two brick-and-mortar rec centers, which is the Hager Ice Skating Rink and the Swimming Pool, which have completely full booking. One of the inaccuracies that I heard in testimony was that this was a low-traffic zone. This is by far not a low-traffic foot zone. It is not even a low-traffic vehicular zone. There is bumper-to-bumper traffic all of the time on Summit in order to get to these schools. But not only that, hockey practice, swimming lessons, water aerobics. We're talking about ice skating lessons. We're, we're talking about year-round programming that is booked to the brim. I've tried two years in a row to get ice skating lessons, and I can't because it's always booked. So this is like year-round programming that's happening where there is pedestrian traffic, foot traffic, a lot of kids, a lot of seniors, a lot of vulnerable populations that are on foot in a heavy-traffic vehicular area. During rush hour, it is congested during the mornings. It is congested for school purposes. And because there are programs in the evenings on weekdays and weekends, it's also congested because of kids and parents leaving practices and other programming.
A minute ago.
Got it. What else do I have on here? I really had a problem with the rendering. There was a bunch of inaccuracies, removing actual trees that exist from your development and then replacing them with trees that don't exist on the thing. Also, making Troy look flatter doesn't, is a bad representation of what the flooding problems and the snowbank problems happen like in the winter and the rainy months. There is an inaccurate depiction of the driveway in relation to the crosswalk, which also has flashing signs. And if that was depicted correctly, then it would show the conflict of like what that driveway position in relation to that crosswalk would be. That would magnify that issue and make that pretty easy to see. I would encourage people to vote no. Also, parking has been terrible. They've removed six parking spots in the last six months on the regular residential street. That on top of curbs is acceptable.
Promoting Deborah Italiano.
Thank you.
Hi, please raise your right hand to be sworn.
We're good. Thank you. Deborah Italiano here.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Thank you, Deborah Italiano. I have some prepared remarks, if that's all right. Can I begin?
Bridget, do you want, do you want Ms. Italiano to spell out her full name?
Yes, please.
D.E.B.R.A., last name Italiano, I.T.A.L.I.A.N.O.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you so much, folks. So I'm the founder and president of Sustainable Jersey City. We're a citywide nonprofit. We launched in 2011. We've been doing many years of work to educate, empower, and activate community stakeholders to make Jersey City a more sustainable and resilient place to live and work. We're one of the lead organizations for green infrastructure in Jersey City. And I've been partnering for years with various municipal offices on projects and studies that would bring the benefits of green infrastructure to our neighborhoods. Much of our work focuses on planning at the neighborhood level. Excuse me. You know, we've had so much rapid development in Jersey City over the last several years. It feels like, you know, we're getting way out in front of our skis without taking time out often enough to make thoughtful decisions about the quality of life impacts all this development has for many residents, particularly those in some of these low-density residential zones. The area where this development project is taking place is kind of interesting because it really depicts, I think beautifully, a set of cross-road perspectives that can really serve as a launching point for a different kind of discussion. Many of the projects that have moved forward with variances have, I think, skewed the original intent of our municipal planners, it seems. Unfortunately, we've lost a lot of green spaces and landscapes in residential neighborhoods, which has obviously implications in regards to flooding, something that's of real concern for us and which we've now partnered with Health and Human Services to be awarded a half-million-dollar grant for the city of Jersey City. Air quality is a concern, and the urban heat island effect, these last two items, is something we've been studying for the last three years and been funded for in partnership with the city. So these are tangible problems in Jersey City. You know, just at the street level, we've lost in these residential neighborhoods front and backyards, street trees, a lot of permeable ground everywhere. You know, as we're hardscaping the city to the max. All this loss of natural landscapes and habitat, by the way, in residential areas has altered the quality of life in these neighborhoods. And here we are putting up something, you know, this large in that neighborhood. The push for more density, you know, is just really skewing, you know, everything. I just want to say that the city passed a new stormwater management ordinance in 2021, which is a step in the right direction.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Who's next, Francisco?
Oh, I was muted. I just promoted last name Jacobs. Oh, there she goes.
Hello?
Raise your right hand to be sworn.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Nanette Jacobs, N.A.N.M.E.T.T.E., J.A.C.O.B.S.
Thank you.
Okay, I am the secretary of the Pershing Field Neighborhood Association, and I send out the meeting notices. And so we had the developers come to our general meeting twice, and they were there in May of 2021 and November of 2021. In both general meetings, we ardently disapproved of what we were presented with. I also would like to say that there was a question today as to whether the people who lived alongside Troy would be able to see the park. I find that the building with just a 10-foot gap between 85 Summit, 805, sorry, 805 Summit and 2 Troy Street, those who sit in their backyards expecting to look out toward the park and see greenery, it will be largely blocked. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Promoting Lewis.
Good evening, everyone.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Louis Villacres, L.U.I.S., V as in Victor, I.L.L., A.C.R.E.S.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. You guys all look exhausted. Some of you, not all of you.
Thank you.
It's nice to see my neighbors. I see them every day, but I see them here focused on one common goal. I love you guys. Thank you for participating. Anyways, since I got three minutes, or I should lessen that. Let me start by saying that I agree with everyone. Everyone's statements today, they're 100% correct. So I'm just going to reiterate everything they said. I live on 6 Troy Street. I've been a realtor for like virtually like about 18 years. 6 Troy Street, if you put that big giant building right there, you're definitely going to block my beautiful view from my kitchen window. That view, I got a beautiful view of the park. I see everybody crossing the street, all that good stuff. Anyways, besides that, I really think that that big giant building has nothing to offer to the community. Like my neighbor said, it will, it will bring more congestion and traffic. Parking is already a huge issue here, huge issue. I believe they said they're going to make eight units. And so let's just say one person per unit, that's eight people, that's eight cars for only four parking garages. Still insane, but okay, let's just assume that's the scenario. And then they said they got bikes. I've never seen anybody riding a bike around here. Never, never. So that bike little thing's not going to work. So now we're going to assume it's one person per unit. I live in a two-family house. We got five cars. So you could just imagine the parking issue we're going to have, the traffic issue we're going to have. I've seen a lot of children get struck by cars. Luckily, we haven't had that issue since I moved here like almost 16 years ago. But it is an issue. Traffic is an issue here every morning. You guys know how it is every morning, afternoon, evening, and night.
One minute to go.
Oh, well, let me just conclude by saying I vote no on this thing. It's just a big mistake for our neighborhood. If you guys vote yes on this, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Patrick.
Please raise your right hand if it's sworn. Hello?
Patrick, we can't hear you. While we're waiting for Patrick to.
Oh, yeah. We promote somebody else.
Promoting Carol. Oh, she is declining.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought I missed my chance. All right, my name is.
Would you raise your right hand if it's sworn?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your full name and spell it for the record.
My name is Patrick, P A T R I C K Pace, P A C E.
Thank you.
Okay, I am someone who's lived in Jersey City since 1955. I've lived in 787 Summit Avenue since 1987. I, from my living room, I can throw a ball out my living room window from my couch and hit 2 Troy Street. Right next to 2 Troy Street is 4 Troy Street. And I noticed that the owner of that building, I don't know the owner of that building, the owner of 2, or the owners on Summit Avenue. But I have noticed that that building had its bricks masonry cleaned and repainted. And the cornice that so many older Jersey City homes used to have before they got covered up during the aluminum siding movement has been repainted and restored so that this building that looks like a dentist's office, let's be clear, is going to be between a restored building and newer buildings that are in concert with what, with what the neighborhood is. I also wanted to point out that many of the commissioners, especially Chairman Jacob and Commissioner Park, brought up excellent points. One is that, what is the width of Troy Street? Well, that's answerable. How high is 787 Summit Avenue? That's also answerable. How high is 4 Troy Street? That's answerable. But we don't have the answers to those. Instead, we have an artist's rendering that is designed to deceive. You cannot put a camera in a place that that artist's rendering that we saw tonight was and gets a picture that looks remotely like that. Other people have commented on the fact that there's, there's a grading to Troy Street. And also that Troy Street is extremely tiny. It's tiny.
Intangible.
Already, the neighborhood that we live in has been, has been asked to accommodate six more units in that building that's behind, that thankfully is not visible from the street. Please, please reject this application because we don't need further density in a corner lot that is designed for a three-family house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I ask how many more from the public is there? And you were going to cut it, you stop people from raising their hand at 10. So how many are left? And is there a way to?
They, we should have, would not accepted any more hand raises after 8:55 PM.
Right.
There are a total of 14 hands left that are raised.
Okay.
I did want to say that I, when one person texted me to say she was having trouble raising her hand, I'm not sure why.
Well, then let's get through the 14 so we could, she could, our problems. Well, he can work at his problems. Let's, let's go, Francisco.
Promoting Carol Albers.
Okay. All right, can you hear me?
Yes, but we cannot see you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm one of these old folks that have to work on this start video. Maybe that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. All right.
Okay, there you go. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state your full name for the record?
Carol, C A R O L Kinley Albers, double name, K I N L E Y A L B E R S. I'll try and be fast. I appreciate the commission. I'm getting tired. I was a little concerned, the rendering. It says, I think it's five foot back from the retainer wall, I think. I'm 5'7", so it's not even my height. That's, that's pretty close to the street. The renderings looked a little inaccurate compared to the people that are like walking in front of it. Because if you had them laying on the, the grass, it'd be over five foot, seven or five foot. It's also, the pictures are very nice. It's white, it's sandstone looking, very light LA. But in reality, we're talking about a big, medium gray plots. It's not white. It's big, medium or dark gray building overshadowing the houses next door. Doesn't fit with the neighborhood. But more importantly, Summit Avenue, right there, we got the park, we have schools, we have, including a school for the blind, we have the fire department, playgrounds, swimming pool, and now the reservoir being opened up. So it's busy. I'm one of probably the few people, and I'm blessed that I have a driveway that enters out into Summit Avenue. I can tell you from experience, it's treacherous. No one stops to let you out in the street anymore. And you're watching kids, delivery guys, bicycles, kids running to the park, as well as a very, very heavy traffic street, Summit Avenue, including buses. And now we have all these SUVs. So a lot of times, even if the street isn't busy, you can't see over the 10-foot trucks that are parked in the street. I don't take that little street. I think it's still Troy going along the reservoir and the playground. Because when you enter out onto Summit Avenue, the visibility is horrific. So I don't even take that now. And I haven't done it for the last 10 years. So I think based on all of this, I would ask the commission to decline, vote no, the project as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Amanda.
Hi.
Right hand to be sworn, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
It's Amanda, A M A N D A Vaughn, V A U G H A N.
Thank you.
Can I start?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also here objecting to the proposal for 2 Troy Street. It's too big. I do currently live in the 805 Summit Ave, which is the red house with the windows. So like I said, the proposal for 2 Troy seems way too big. It is going to cut off our light and air. That is the room that gets the best sun and it's where I currently work from home. So that's unappealing as a renter. You know, if you made the building smaller, you could accommodate for this issue personally to 805. You could also accommodate everyone else's objections about the neighborhood because there would be less units in the building, which would fit this residential area better. And it is a kid-heavy, family-heavy residential area. You know, beyond just negatively impacting my desire to rent this unit and stay in this neighborhood as a renter. For the people who are here established with families participating, living within this community, they're, they're objecting to it. They plan to stay. And they object to permanent things like parking with so many people coming into this proposed new place. The garage entry would eliminate one or two parking already on Summit. So you're taking away parking while adding in more people. And also just beyond the way that it looks not fitting the neighborhood, I think the people who would be attracted to living in a luxury building with large windows don't fit this neighborhood. They don't sound like residential people. They sound like, you know, luxury apartment living style people. So that's also part of the reason why I think they would bring lots of vehicles into the neighborhood. But yeah, beyond it just not fitting the neighborhood and looking out of place and being unappealing to me as a renter. If I was potentially going to rent in that place, I would think it's weird. It's in the wrong neighborhood. Like Pershing Field is a nice park, but it's for kids and families and baseball. The Ice House is cool, but again, it's for kids. In the morning, we are woken up to street traffic. We do hear the kids at 3 o'clock screaming as they're walking home. Again, it's a family area. We're woken up on Saturday mornings in the winter by jock jams and hockey games. Like, none of this seems appealing to me for someone who's going to rent potentially a parking space, an elevator, large windows overlooking a childhood park with families. The large balconies, like all that's going to be right on the street in an area that I don't think like supports that style. So I think it would be better if you build something that actually fits this residential area, even though it's technically bigger than an apartment building on 2 Troy that already exists. But it's a completely different living style. You can tell from the two buildings. Yeah, so I would vote no. I don't think that this supports this neighborhood. I think this neighborhood is families and children. And even I feel out of place here.
Thank you.
Promoting F. Garcia. And I do just want to update the board. There are 11 hands raised. And the last person with their hand raised, I see, is Nisha. So I just wanted to update everyone.
Hi, greetings.
That's not going to work. You need to mute your computer. Audio on there. Soon, audio, your computer audio.
I can hear you now.
I can hear all of you.
How about now?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Yes, my name is Fabiel, F A B B I E L L E Garcia, G A R C I A.
Thank you.
Hey, so greetings, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to join the meeting. Hope everybody's having a good night. I am also a resident of 805 Summit Avenue directly next to this proposed building. We have a eastern front view which oversees or has a very nice view of the reservoir. Having this building right next to it would take that away. We can see it from our southern windows. It would also take the sunlight away. We work from home in our, in our living room. The sun and the view would be taken away. And as a renter here, doesn't seem too appealing because we rented here because the, the neighborhood is very nice. The view was spectacular. And I work in the area, so it's convenient. Traffic is absurd. Troy is a very small street and Summit as well, even though that's a larger street and a main street. The parking there is incredibly inconvenient and also dangerous. Like many other people have said, there is, there's three schools and the firehouse right around the corner. So it's, it's a lot going on, on any given day. At night, there's a lot of coming and going of cars, especially in the daytime in the morning as well. Already, we've, we've witnessed like two to three accidents. People parking on the streets, cars not stopping when pedestrians are walking. It's, it's, it truly is dangerous. And I, I do want to say that I, I'd like to vote no on this proposed building. So I yield my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person to be promoted is Olaski.
Hello, would you raise your right hand if it's sworn?
Hi.
Hi. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And could you please state and spell your full name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Alexei Yipishkin. I'm going to spell it. First name, O L E K S I I Yipishkin. Last name, I E P I S H K I N.
Thank you.
Can I start?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm gonna save your time and be very short. I lived in the neighborhood for five years. I have kids. It's a great neighborhood. I also help the hockey coaches drink. So when we have practices, it could be between 20 and 40 families coming, often driving. Parking around the park is very difficult. I know the area. I've been coming here even before I moved to the Heights. It's low-density buildings. And why these people want to build a high-density building here, it's eight, eight apartments, right? In the R1 zone. It's crazy. I don't want to offend anyone, but just saying. It's like, yeah, I understand everyone wants, wants money and maximize the area, but there is no reasonably sized backyard in this project at all. It's like, it takes the air and light from your neighbors. And my question is, how is this respectful to your neighbors to do this? Like, you don't respect them if you do this. Like you don't respect them if you do this. And like giving them 10 feet, man. So I, I ask to vote no for this and downsize the project. Like, why are you doing this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Promoting Monica.
Hello?
There you are. We can hear you and see you.
Hi, okay.
Do you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Monica, M O N I C A Plotka, P L O T K A. I'm a 20-year resident of the Heights and I often walk around the neighborhoods. And I took the walk with the planner in November, talking about all the different changes they were making to the master plan. And I felt like, oh wow, this is awesome. They're going to really keep the R1 zone, you know, sacred. And then I hear about this building at 16 Troy and I go walk by there and I'm like, oh my God, how did this get built? And then they're telling me about, some people on the walk started telling me about this building as well, two Troy. And I felt just so sad for the people who live there that they're getting a one-two punch now. The second egregious building coming to their neighborhood. I urge you to vote no on this building, building. It's way out of scale for the R1 zone. I don't understand why that on this particular lot, which I agree is odd. They could have built a kick-ass two-family house and, you know, everybody probably would have. There's nothing anyone could have said, you know, but putting eight units on this irregular shaped lot is just, I just think it's a big smack in the face to everyone who lives in the Heights. I'm particularly concerned about the environmental impact of it as well. For about 18 years, I lived here in the Heights and I never had flooding in my house. But so many two-family houses with driveways and almost, you know, a lot more lot coverage than in the past have come to my street and the surrounding areas. And my house is now flooding. My neighbors, I lived on, I live in Ogden between South and Bowers. My neighbors almost lost their lives across the street during the unprecedented flooding that we had with the remnants of Ida when the water came gushing through their houses and could have pushed them out down the hill. So I feel like you guys are, you're the gatekeepers. You're the people that are protecting us from all of these crazy developments that are changing our neighborhoods drastically. I have a big problem with the driveway at this particular development at two Troy that they're proposing because it's like coming out of a cave. And I, if, that's one thing that makes me crazy. I have two kids. I'm always teaching them to watch for cars coming out of these hidden driveways all over the place in the Heights. You have to be very careful with the cars coming out. People can't see you. And this is kind of the worst example I've ever seen. So please protect our Norman Rockwellian sort of village here. I beg you, don't pass this project through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Katz Caroline.
We cannot see, oh, we, we can't see. There you are. Yes, we see you. Can we hear you?
I don't see you.
Maybe that's best.
Raise your right hand to be sworn, please.
This is so weird. Yes, you can see me. I want to see myself. Okay.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Caroline Katz, C A R O L I N E K A T Z.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hello, I'm Caroline Katz, or Caroline Katz Mount, and I'm vice president of PFNA, which is the Pershing Field Neighborhood Association. I've lived in the Heights since 1991 and I love this community. I thank you for listening to everyone tonight and for realizing that your decisions will have a lasting impact on our community. The developer's proposal will be terrible for Troy Street. First, if I may correct their record, they met with PFNA two times, not five. And these meetings did not include, quote, "a continuous exchange of ideas" or, quote, "stakeholder engagement." We're the stakeholders. We didn't think we were engaging. The changes that they made subsequently also did not address our objections. Their presentations did not show a really kind of open interest, as we felt anyway, in our community and its people. The focus was on their new big house and how great it is. But they will, but they didn't have to, if they were concerned about what the community feels, why are they fixated on that big house? Why can't they consider the existing house? They will demolish it, although it adds charm to the corner of Troy and Summit. It's on a hill. It's small enough not to block anyone's views. It's surrounded by landscape, by earth, not cement. While kind of quirky, it's also, it's pleasing to the eye and it's inviting. It relates to the small homes and the street of Troy and the homes of Summit. And this is in marked contrast.
One minute ago.
And this is in marked contrast to the proposed highly inappropriate, modern dominating, extra-large hotel-like building. And although, and although they said that no one lives in this house, in the existing house, it does. And they could make that little house four bedrooms, make it, and, and it would, it would bring in new people and it would be great for the neighborhood. And I want to say one more thing about the new 16 Troy Street project. That project has filled open space. It destroyed trees. It affected the quality of life of 12 residents who are the immediate neighborhoods. 16 Troy was bad enough. It was enough upsetting change to the street. And Troy Street deserves better this time from you. So I hope that you, our zoning board, as Jersey City residents, we ask you, please consider our concerns and needs and send this proposal back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Rennie Stoll.
Good evening. Can you see me?
Yes. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like me to spell my name?
Yes, please.
It's Rennie Stoll, R E N I, and my last name is Stoll, S T O L L.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much and good evening. I really appreciate all your patience and time to listen to all of us. I think it's wonderful that a community comes together because the more of us involved, the better Jersey City will get. And we know it needs all the help from everyone involved. So your job is very important to safeguard how our city is built, to make it smarter, greener, and really more beautiful. You see, I'm European and it's really interesting to see how we consider new developments on the other side of Atlantic Ocean. We think how to integrate the newness and the, and the modern language into what's existing, right? Are we going to respect the harmony and consistency with local language and the history and how it's all fitting? So I think in Jersey City, what you have really great is you have actually design standards that really are guardrails to how new developments fit within the existing residential neighborhoods. And they are actually under zoning. They're called residential design standards, paragraph 345-62. And I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they're really wonderful because they speak paragraph and paragraph about conditions such as incorporating architectural features such as windows and door detailing and decoration, roof styles, roof pitches, porches, stoops, et cetera. It talks also about proportion, mass, and scale. So it makes sense within the neighborhood. For the roof, you know, it's interesting because this building, majority of the building sits on Summit Avenue, which is really important avenue. It's kind of the entrance gate into Jersey City Heights from Journal Square. So majority of the building sits on the Summit Avenue. And if you see, if you look at adjacent buildings, they all have really steep pitch roofs. You actually can see it in my background. I thought this will be really helpful to demonstrate that this building has nothing to do with how adjacent buildings actually look like with the existing architecture. So I think also, you know, something to consider is environmental impact. You know, we are talking about increasing the size of the building while decreasing existing landscape and the contour, right? You have a lot of permeable surface, about 3,000 square feet, that's going to be shrunk by about 50%. So imagine, you know, during heavy rains, all this water that could infiltrate into the lawn and into the ground now has to be coming through combined sewage system, which is already, the infrastructure is really tired. So are we thinking about all these considerations and about the green and, and the environment and the flooding as we are approving?
Thank you.
Promoting Mary Mills. Mary, can you please unmute yourself?
I did it. I did it. Okay. All right. All right. I have a lot to say. I work about 300 hours a year in Pershing Field for the Pershing Field Garden Friends, remember? I'm not very important. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but you have to be sworn in and we have to see you.
Sorry, sorry. Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you put on your video?
I think I did, didn't I?
No.
Oh, okay. Yeah. You have to send me that message again. I'm sorry. It's a new phone. I really am way beyond my. Can you send me that? Please send me the message. All right.
The, to show.
Can Mary be sworn if we can't see her age or gender, if she is who she says she is?
Yes, let's do it that way.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Your video.
Ms. Mills?
Yes.
Verify that you are who you just stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as if it was under oath tonight?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Mary Jane Mills.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I, I, I do three, some 400 hours a year of gardening over in that upper level. You see, that berm you're talking about, that the little house, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear.
Okay, that berm you talk about is not soil. You go down three feet, that is solid rock. And all you have to do to verify that is try to dig it and look at the US Geological map, which has mapped it out. It is solid diabase or basalt, the hardest rock on earth. So I don't want to be the one trying to hollow out that rock there. It's, I think we could get rid of that whole problem for you if you would get rid of a floor and not give these people any parking. Now, I know you want to give a parking, but let me tell you benefit of my experience. I was 22 years of a realtor. People come from the sap, from, you know, South Jersey, Ohio, whatever. They think they have to have a car. They, they put, they, if they can't park it somewhere on the dentist, they get a ticket. They get tickets, tickets. They get rid of that car because they just thinks they're going to go see mom and dad or go to the beach. These are young people and they're not, some of them need to raise families there. I hope we have a two and three bedroom, but I, I want to speak to that. There's plenty of density, but it's humans. You know, those buildings are cottages on both sides are cottages. Not this very corporate-looking gray, dark gray, no color of building that is pointed toward Manhattan instead of the trajectory that's important to the people on Troy, which is to each other.
Minute ago.
Okay, I have a question for the architect. Don't you need two staircases inside for eight units? I looked it up in the code, but I'd rather read the book of the dead than read the code. So maybe you can enlighten me on that. Exit stairs. And don't they have to be fireproof so you don't have smoke coming down into that garage? Because the other thing is, I'm 70 now. All you have to know, it, to be handicapped is to get old. And if I had to go down that, in a, that little entrance, if you could find the front door, which by the way, it's a mystery, that is hidden in there. Every cottage has a front door they're proud of. But all of that iconic, iconic, those images are of no use to this building. So.
Promoting Jay.
Thank you.
Good day, hopefully.
Yes. Hi, would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Be sworn. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And please state and spell your full name for the record.
My name is Jay Ball, J A Y B A L L.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the building's appearance is an homage to brutalist concrete worship, insipidly inspired by Journal Square. It's ugly as F. Someday, somebody's going to wander into the garage thinking that's the path station. I don't like it and it does not go with the neighborhood. It is too big, too many units, too much going on. I own a three-unit building, about a six-minute walk away. My lot size is 50 to 60% bigger than this lot size and I have three units. And somehow you want to shove eight units into a smaller lot size. Not against development, this corner probably needs development. There's too much there. There's too much there. I also believe that you've been disingenuous in your discussions of this building compared to other buildings and the areas around it. I'd like to call out that your bike rack, how do you get a car around it? I mean, in your architecture diagram, you just have this little tiny bike rack, but you don't put bikes there, but the cars have parking link. How does a car, what's the turning radius there? Pretty quickly, that bike rack's going to go away and you're not going to have a bike rack. So we're only doing that for the visuals for this presentation. I keep hearing that this building is three stories tall and the building across the street is five stories tall. Well, the top of the first floor in the building across the street is actually below the ceiling of your floor number zero. That's kind of disingenuous. I believe you keep making this building appear smaller than it is in your discussions. I keep hearing that the top of the building is thirty-four feet high, but really it's fifty-two feet nine inches high because everyone is looking at this from Summit. Nobody's looking at this from Troy. So please be a bit more honest about that. Also, your traffic engineering report conflicts with the architecture diagram. Why do you get a thirteen-foot curb cut in your architecture diagram when every building on my street has ten feet and your traffic engineering report says you only need ten feet? So can you rectify that? Additionally, you say you have four parking spots of eight feet six inches. You only have three in your architecture diagram with a slightly smaller spot there. So maybe correct that, too. I would encourage the board to vote no on this and encourage the architect to please do a little bit better with something smaller and something a bit more pretty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Paul Matuzzo.
Hi, Paul.
Hi, Bridget.
Hand to be sworn?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure. Paul Amatuzzo, P A U L A M A T U Z Z O.
Thanks, Paul.
So I'd like to thank everyone for your time tonight, and I'd like to state that I am the president of the Persian Field Neighborhood Association. I am a current commissioner on the city's Historic Preservation Commission for the last twelve years. And I am also an elected official. I am a committee man for Ward D, District Twenty-One. First off, I just wanted to clarify once again that we have only met with these, with this developer and his team twice. The first time, it was an all-out no from everyone. We were especially objectionable to the parking because of the way, the, where the garage is situated. Actually, the first time, the garage was actually on Troy Street, the garage entrance. Then they took it away from there because of the way the utilities are set up. They could not actually make the turn into the garage from Troy Street without it being quite awkward. So the next time they met with us, they had moved the garage to Summit Avenue, or at one point, they may have actually taken away. I believe in one of Richard's renderings that he showed of the five iterations of the building, you'll see one of them has no garage at all, no driveway at all. Because at one point, when they met with us, they took the parking away. When we went to meet the next time with them, which was the first time with this board and the meeting was moved, the parking was back and the driveway was back. So I just want to say that we have not had a continual conversation with this group at all. They have not listened to anything that the neighborhood has requested. We'd be much happier if they would just do a two-unit building, what's allowable, and would be much happier maybe with a four-unit building. But to put eight units on this corner with all the children that pass and cross this street, I've seen blind children being taught how to cross the street at Summit Avenue and Troy Street. Now you're going to put this modern-looking Miami Beach building that relates to nothing in a, in a ten-block radius, plopped in the middle of this lot, and for what reason? They're asking for a four-hundred percent increase in density, four-hundred percent. Come on now. There's plenty of opportunity. All of south of this location has been rezoned. We're going to see lots of huge buildings coming. This is not the area. This is not the corner for an eight-unit building. I urge you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Promoting Mauro.
Oh, there you are. Would you raise your right hand? Great. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Mauro, M A U R O, Altamura, A L T A M U R A.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being so attentive. And I know you've heard a lot of this already, but I'm going to reiterate some of it. I'm speaking as a resident of this neighborhood on Carlton Avenue, where my wife and I live, around the corner from the proposed building. The project is simply too dense and too big for the neighborhood and will adversely affect the area, which is already under duress due to traffic and density. I don't remember the person's name, and I want to talk about a few things that happened on December eighth. A gentleman spoke on that date regarding traffic, and he made some comments about the impact of traffic. One comment was that there are, quote, "bike lanes in the area, which occupants could use for transportation." While there may be some bike lanes, Sherman Place has one, for instance, that essentially goes nowhere, and there's one on New York Avenue. I dispute the statement that there are, that bikes are an alternative. I ride my bike very often and get out of the heights as soon as I can because there's no safety in the area, even on the few existing bike lanes. Summit Avenue and Kennedy are both dangerous, as you've been hearing by all my previous commenters. Commuting to Journal Square, for example, is not safe on a bike. It's getting worse with the addition of electric bike deliveries. Traffic is extremely heavy on Summit, Kennedy, and Central during rush hours. As you know, this includes school pickup at two-thirty to four PM. So bikes are not feasible, in my opinion. Carlton is backed up from Tunnelley to Summit some days at those times. There's constant traffic at other times, and this has exponentially increased. Fourteen bedrooms are planned. Four parking spots for an eight-unit structure is completely inadequate. What I've seen is that investors buy these developments and rent them to non-related people. So there might be three or four cars for every unit. Four spots is absurd. There will be even more and more cars adding to traffic. And that's, and as well as an already very challenging street parking scarcity. The investor owners are not involved with the property. Real estate agents rent the condos for the owners often, and the renters, more than one person per bedroom, have little connection to the neighborhood and do not care for the property or its median environment. Trash is strewn about. The building is not maintained, and they, quote, landscaping is not cared for. In short, the new buildings soon look worse than what they replaced. The bigger issue in this kind of development is completely out of character with the neighborhood if this project is approved.
Thank you.
Promoting Mary Ann Sullivan.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Mary Ann Sullivan, M A R Y A N N E, last name Sullivan, S U L L I V A N. I just quickly want to say thank you to everybody for coming tonight, and if I could personally reread Ms. McWilliams' letter that she read at the beginning of this testimony of all of the neighbors, I would do that. She perfectly captured everything that really is a problem for this project. The scale, the density, the lack of design standards that do not fit into this neighborhood. I happen to know the Oz Turks. They took in tremendous amount of care in building a home for their family that truly fits in with this neighborhood. Proposing a building with gray brick and gray siding and pops of orange is definitely not one that fits in with our neighborhood. And of course, the parking. I mean, four spots for a building of that size is really a travesty. I don't care what kind of national standards you can cite for that. It is absolutely not reflective of how parking works in this city. So to simply put it, I really encourage you all to please vote no, and please do not continue to destroy our neighborhood with thoughtless buildings like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Virgi. Or Verghi.
Francisco, how many more?
There, there are three more hands that are raised.
Francisco, when you told us that there were eleven at one stage, we are on the eleventh person now.
So there's three more. The last person was Nisha, and then I believe Cynthia said one individual could not get their hand raised, and they raised their hand after that.
Do you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Vergese.
Your full name for the record?
Yes. First name is Vergese, V as Victor, E R G H E S E, last name Thanjin, T H A N J A N.
Could you spell your first name again?
Oh, Vergese, V E R G H E S E.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to bring something different than everyone else is saying, a lot of local residents are speaking. I'm from downtown Jersey City, but I do use the Persian Field. There's another street that's missing in conversation. It's called How We Think Way, which is a one-street, one-way street that cuts through the Pershing Rink and Pool Park area. So when we exit, we have to deal with Summit, we have to deal with Troy, and now we have to deal with this curb cut with another garage. It's a very tricky area to exit. This will impact other people who may not be residents of the local area also. Also, what I'd like to say is administratively, do we get meeting minutes and is it posted? Is there any way for us residents to access that? Major point is, has hardship been proven to have a variance by zoning? And also another point, residents have said something, which I don't know if it's true or not. They said that planning doesn't support this. I don't know if that's a true statement or not, and I don't know if the commissioners are getting information that what's the planning's view on this development? I'm just curious to attorney Pizzillo, I'd just like to know for, is this owned by a corporation or a partnership? Because municipal land use has a rule forty-eight point four. I don't know who the owner is, and there is a rule for concealing ownership and stuff. So I just want to know, who are they?
Sure. So if you looked, if you were attended the last meeting, as well as looked on the city planning data portal, all of the applicable ownership information is there, but for the record, my clients are a husband and wife who also live in the Heights.
Okay. Thank you. So end of the day is, like everyone else is saying, I don't know if this hardship has been proven. I don't see it. And it looks like the hardship is transferred to everyone else who's impacted by this. So I hope the commissioners vote no on this and would like to know what's planning's view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Pritesh.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Got it. Great.
Okay. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Pritesh Patel. P R I, P R I, P E S H, last name P A T E L.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a good change in Jersey City Heights. We see a lot of building in Journal Square. Can you hear me?
Hello? We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a good change for the Jersey City Heights. It's like, you know, close to the Persian Field Park, close to the, like, you know, major neighborhood, and I see the lot of building it's approving in Journal Square. So I wish it'd get approval in Jersey City Heights. They had already four parking spots, and I live in the Troy State. I don't get any trouble with the parking in Jersey City Heights. So I don't know why not. They're supposed to get that approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Nisha. And then the last hand raised is Jersey City Parks Coalition.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you start your video?
Raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Yes, I do.
Thank you. And please state and spell your full name for the record.
My last name is Patel, P A T E L. My first name is N I S H A.
Thank you.
So I own the house on Troy Street. They are good people. Before they took over, the house was always smelled dirty, so they really taking care. Also, I noticed from the last discussion about the school and the traffic. I wonder a couple of blocks around this project, there are multifamily units, and they are planning to use the same school and the same Summit Avenue traffic, even worse than Troy Street. So having builders, all those big builders, if they're getting approval by the normal people, they are the only ones suffer. And last time I was hearing, I hear they are almost like two, three years, the thing is keep going on. So I guess I'm, I'm in support of the project. Also, people were talking about the sixteen Troy Street. Yeah, I love trees, but then it was never maintained. So always the snake coming in my apartment, the honeybees come, so I was never able to use the backyard. At least now it's clean and I can use the backyard. So I am in support of this project. I hope it gets approved.
Thank you.
And lastly, promoting City, Jersey City Parks Coalition. Oh, they declined. Okay, I'm going to try it one more time. Okay, they're joining.
Okay.
Do you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the whole, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you. And please state and spell your full name for the record.
Yes, it's Laura, L A U R A, Skolar, S K O L A R. Um, and for the record, I just would like to say, I am not speaking on behalf of the Jersey City Parks Coalition. I was just at a prior meeting earlier this evening and don't know how to change that, to put my name there. So, um, Benny, but thank you. And I will be very brief. Um, I know it's been a long night and it's been a long time leading up to this, um, but I do think it's very important um, for all of those people that have spoken, um, regarding the deficiencies of this, uh, project and how it will negatively impact, um, our neighborhood. Um, I am the owner of seven eighty-seven Summit Avenue apartment number twelve, um, so directly across the street. Um, I also have lived in the neighborhood for over thirty years, um, first there and then on Beach Street. And so I'm quite familiar with the neighborhood. Um, I, I'm gonna make just one very simple and direct point, and it has to do with the building at seven eighty-seven Summit. Um, that keeps being held up as the justification, um, for this building. Um, that building is so many feet high. It's, it's the full lot coverage. It's, you know, and that is true. Nobody can dispute that. However, that building was built in the early nineteen hundreds. That was built at a time that there were no zoning ordinances. There were no, um, restrictions on what you can build. And so now going fast forward into modern day times, we have put into place ordinances, things that would help to protect and preserve the nature and character of this special neighborhood. Um, so because of that, I think that it is really incumbent, um, upon this board, um, to do their duty by, um, preserving um, what we see in that neighborhood as a very special character.
A minute to go.
Thank you. Um, and I will, I will leave it at that. And, um, I would just request that the, um, uh, the board votes no on this project. Thank you.
Diet Foods Public Testimony.
Thank you, Francisco. Um, so we'll close, uh, public testimony. Um, Bridget, do you need a break? Are you good to finish this out?
Gee, how long we go? How about that?
Okay.
I don't know. Are we looking at ten minutes or forty?
I, I mean, I, I assume that there'll be some. Just, I don't know if Mr. Pizzillo wants to say anything further. I would assume yes. And then I think that staff will give some presentation.
Okay, why don't we just take a short break then?
Okay. Very short break, everyone. It's ten eighteen. Please, please try to be back, you know, three, four minutes.
I'm ready.
Apologize. Um, Bridget, so let's close the public, uh, portion of the application.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Pizzillo, uh, I didn't know if you wanted to respond to any public comment.
If, if the board prefers, if Chairman you prefer, I could tie it into my closing to, so as to.
Sure.
Uh, you know, and I don't know if you want to hear the, my summation last, or if you want to hear Francisco first before me, or.
I mean, it's your presentation. I want you to do what you're most comfortable with.
Well, I'm at the, I'm at the mercy of the board. Uh, my presentation is concluded, but I, I, I could sum up now before the planning testimony.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you, board members. Uh, I know this has been a long, hard hearing. I think this is probably hour nine of two back-to-back me, or two meetings. Uh, so I respect and appreciate your time and attention. A, a lot has been said. Uh, a lot has been said here. Um, I, I think I'd like to take an opportunity just to correct and clarify a few things uh, that were stated by the members of the public. I think the reality of this situation is there's never any intent by my clients to sleight of hand deceive uh, or anything otherwise with regards to the community. I think when, when we initially presented this project to them, yes, we, we heard them loud and clear and we revised the project based on their comments. When it comes to the parking, there was a point in time when we didn't have parking. But the only, and I don't know if you remember, it's been so long and you probably forgot what I said at the beginning. But in November of twenty twenty-one, we were cleared to this board for an eight-unit building with no parking spaces. It's only after a council, the councilman contacted me representing another segment of the community who wanted the parking. So we went back to city planning, back to engineering to see if they would support. And, and they were okay with parking outside the, along Summit Avenue or the entrance coming in and off of Summit Avenue. And they were. And, and, and we brought the parking back into the project to further address what we thought were legitimate community concerns and we wanted to address those concerns. Now, we got there. We got to the board. We got, we're cleared before you, which means city planning, who, I'm a resident, I'm a longtime resident of Jersey City. And, and I, and I work in other jurisdictions as well. And I, and, and I'm glad that we have our city planners here. Because they are, they are very good at what they do. And they are very tough and they are very strict. And they don't let projects get to you unless they're comfortable that, and, and they feel that it does meet with all of the design standards and all of the requirements of the land development ordinance. We, this is a, this is a quasi judicial board. We are presenting to you, we're here before you on a legal claim and with expert testimony as to whether we have made our case as to the variances that we are requesting. I think we've made that case. You've heard over ninety minutes of testimony from our expert witnesses explaining and justifying the variances that we're seeking. There's a staff memo that details the density here. And we're not, as was discussed or as was stated earlier, completely out of line with the surrounding area. We're not. And it's confirmed in the planning memo. And, and, and I will not speak for the city planners, but they are not against this project. If they were against this project, we wouldn't be before you tonight. They wouldn't let, they would have not let us get this far. So i- in, in some, I think when you look at the case from the legalities of it and the expert testimony that we've presented to you, we have met our burden. We have met our burden and these variances can be granted and they should be granted. And I would respectfully request that you do grant them and, and you do grant the preliminary and final major site plan with, with the variances uh, we are requesting. And in closing, I again, thank you for your time and your attention.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Cynthia or Ms. Hodge?
Yes, yeah, no, that's fine. Um, so, uh, thank you, uh, for, uh, giving us and this project so much time and attention, commissioners. My clients and I really appreciate it and I appreciate that the public stayed engaged for a four-month period because this was first scheduled in October and we've had people showing up month after month, um, from October and until now of January. Uh, I think you, you heard from the public, they were overwhelmingly opposed to the project for many, many different reasons. And I, I don't believe that, um, you know, what, what Mr. Pizzillo said is a, a staff planner's endorsement of the project should overshadow the, the public test comment that you heard this evening. I would like to reorient the board around the legal standard for granting a D-one use variance. It's supposed to be very difficult to, uh, grant a use variance or to prove that you're entitled to a use variance. And what the Supreme Court said in the Medici case is that the applicant must prove the proposed site is particularly suitable to the proposed use. And the magic language is particularly suitable. And then the Medici court went further and said that you have to prove, uh, the particular suitability by an enhanced quality of proof. And that phrase is, they can mystify me for a good ten years, but um, what that means is that the proofs have to reconcile the proposed use. What, why is the proposed use not included among the permitted uses in the zone? And I don't think we've heard, why not? So, so please consider, has the applicant given you a good explanation as to why eight-unit multifamilies are not a permitted use in this zone? Because that was the applicant's burden of proof by an enhanced, to, to make this showing by an enhanced quality proof. And we have to consider, we have a brand new plan, brand new master plan, new zoning changes. Some of them have already been implemented. If the governing body wanted to make this type of multifamily a permitted use in the R-one zone, it could have done so, but it didn't. And you heard our planner testify about that. Um, the applicant hasn't given you a good explanation and that's because it can't. This was not an oversight. Our zoning ordinance is not outdated. The zone is predominantly a low-density zone and the master plan has specifically recommended protecting it. It's recommended. It's also recommended establishing a density standard in the R-one. Um, what was the testimony you heard about particular suitability? There wasn't much from the applicant's planner. He talked generally about corner lots and that there are other multifamilies in the neighborhood, but he didn't really talk about this particular corner or why a multi, an eight-unit multifamily belongs on this particular corner. And, and that's because it doesn't. Um, our planning expert gave the opinion that nothing um, about the corners particularly suitable. And he, he said our, our one district is mostly intact in the neighborhood. And a few non-conforming structures are not a reason for approving even more non-conforming structures. That is not a legitimate planning justification for granting yet another use variance. Um, the developer can't meet the setback. He can't meet the front setback requirement. He doesn't even come close to meeting the rear setback requirement. The developer needs height and density variances too, which are of a fairly, uh, big magnitude. So even though it's a larger lot, the project is hard to squeeze this project onto that lot without pushing out close, close to the boundary lines be, beyond the permitted setbacks. Another, that's another strike against particular suitability. Now going over to the negative criteria. You heard a lot about substantial detriments from the expert, from our planning expert, from the public, from my clients, but just to sum up. Overwhelming massing, light in there blocked, the driveway has poor visibility. It's double the permitted density. There's a problem with parking. Some people think there's uh, too much and there shouldn't be any parking. Some people think there's not enough depending on your perspective. The non-conforming rear setback impinges on the neighbors. You heard from the tenants directly. The front encroachment on Troy is not harmonious. It does not fit in. And I think the new rendering, we, you know, we, it was newly introduced tonight. It really perfectly illustrates how this building overwhelms, uh, all the homes along Troy, the homes along Summit and really just doesn't fit in and with the character of the neighborhood. Um, and, and going back to the reconciliation, a clear decision was made not to bring multifamily housing into the neighborhood along this part of Summit Avenue. If you approve this application so soon after we had a ma- new master plan, so soon after some high-density areas have already been identified that do not include this neighborhood, you are in effect zoning by variance. You are spot zoning if you approve this application. And I think the developers team did a very good job trying to sell you on this project. But if you listened carefully, there were a lot of inconsistencies in that presentation. They said it's a four-story. That feels like a three-story. Well, it, what, what is it? Is it a four-story or a three-story? It's a four-story. They, and, and this was at the prior hearing in case you, you don't recall, uh, Chairman uh, Jacobs. Uh, the hill is hi- hiding the first story. It's not really a hill when we're talking about traffic safety. Then it's street, you know, them, uh, but, but sometimes it's a hill when you want to talk about the overall height and where the grade is. Um, is the front on Troy or is it on Summit? They say it's Troy, but the entries and the exits and the driveway are all on Summit. On the rear setback, it's a rear setback. The requirement is twenty feet, but then sometimes they want to say it's, it's really more like a side, so you don't need to have that twenty feet there. Is it a rear or is it a side? They say the site is suitable, but they still need a lot of bulk variances, height variance, density variance. Um, to, to squeeze this building, um, onto the site and, and, um, I think there, there was a lot of skill in presenting that application and kind of massaging things, but I'm sure you can all, um, draw your own conclusions. My, my feeling is the applicant hasn't met its burden of proof. I hope you agree with me. I did want to say that before, um, the staff planner comments, I did want to, and maybe you already are aware of this. I did want to put this on the record. Uh, Mr. Espinoza disclosed to me easier earlier this week that he is not, um, a, a licensed planner. So I don't know if you want to ask him about his expert qualifications, the same way you would ask any expert, um, presenting testimony, but you're essentially, you know, there's a memo that was, he wrote, that was heavily relied upon by the applicant's planner that was prepared by an unlicensed planner. So, uh, thank you for listening, everybody.
Thank you.
Chairman and counsel, uh, all planners in my office, right, player members under me, um, or Matt.
Excuse me, Tanya, can I swear you in?
Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And just state your name for the record, Tanya.
Tanya Marion. Yeah, I, I apologize for any confusion, Mrs. Jones. Um, yeah, uh, all planners in the office uh, right underneath my supervision, uh, especially, uh, Francisco.
And to put it on the record, I did tell you this, Cynthia. So it seems like you kind of misconstrued what I told you.
No, I, I said you just closed it, but I just wanted to make sure it was on the record this evening.
Okay. So I think we're gonna move to, um, um, here from, uh, staff. And I, I'd really like to, kind of in, in light of some of the points that were made, um, by, you know, I guess, all, all parties, um, and, and the public. Um, help me understand how we can get to the point, uh, to understand that, that this meets the burden for positive and negative criteria. Um, so I think that, that's an area that, um, I'm having some concern with. Um, and then, um, also your, your view on the suitability for density at this location, um, whi- which was another, you know, point I, I was, you know, wrestling a lot with. And then the, the third thing, which I'm sure you'll get into, uh, i- is the, you know, specific and peculiar nature of, of this exact block of Jersey City. So, um, we have, as has been mentioned by, uh, people from the public, um, looked at, uh, applications on Troy Street before. Um, it's a super unique, uh, part of Jersey City, um, sitting between, um, park reservoir. Um, it's a small street that doesn't go, uh, in a straight line. Um, so it, it has some very unique and interesting features, um, that make it seem of a, you know, different and, and lower density character than a lot of other parts of, uh, Jersey City and the Heights.
Uh, and let me share my screenshot so I can show you the report so you can follow along. All right. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't think the board has seen aerial photos, just to orient everyone, um, and get a grasp of where we are. This is. This is Summit and this is Troy. I do also have uh photos from the ground. And then, just to fast forward, I think we've all heard about the existing and what is proposed, I do want to get into the staff comments regarding the D one variance. So for a use variance, the project should be evaluated in terms of intensity of use. Mainly site su- suitability of the proposed density should be considered. Finding them to show that the site can accommodate issues that may be associated with the increased density and bulk of the building. With five thousand and five square feet, the site of two Troy is oversized. Therefore, the proposed use is suited to the property. Beyond the use itself, the proposed density should be considered. The implied density of a two family of a non-conforming lot of two thousand five hundred square feet is thirty-five units an acre. The proposed density for the project is nearly seventy units an acre. Unit sizes are also considered when evaluating site suitability. The average unit size is roughly eight hundred and fifty-four square feet, which are adequately sized. In addition, the design, the building design also includes several at-grade setbacks and upper story setbacks ranging in distance from ten to twenty feet on average. It is the opinion of the staff that the applicant meets the following intent of the land use objectives of the Jersey City Master Plan. To continue efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods and to ensure the city's available housing is balanced, meets the needs of all current and future city residents. It is also the opinion of the staff that this proposal advances the following purposes of zoning per the M L U O. B, to securely, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. The applicant is proposing a green roof and other green features such as a gr- as a rain garden and river rocks to mitigate any rainwater. E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions. Regions and preservation of the environment. The applicant is proposing a residential use on the property in accordance with the zone district. The proposed unit count is a proxy, is appropriate for the oversized nature of the lot and the proposed bulk associated with the multifamily use is consistent with the character and scale of the surrounding context. The property is unique because it sits on a corner that is contiguous with Summit Ave. The character of Summit Ave varies with one and two family homes, mid-rise apartment buildings and mixed use uh, mixed uses dotted throughout the neighborhood. These uses and homes are non-conforming pre-existing structures that would not be allowed today in, in the R one zone. Twenty percent of the block, however, has existing non-conforming densities and multifamily structures. Now, this is specifically from the stretch of Summit to Troy and Carlton. Forty percent of the homes on the block that line Summit from Troy to Car- Car- Carlton, excuse me, have garages at the base of their structure. One home is of four stories and the highest dwelling unit uh per acre on this portion of the block is sixty-eight dwelling units an acre. This does not can, this does not take into consideration the five-story, one hundred and ninety-nine dwelling unit an acre apartment building directly across from two Troy. Unit counts range from one to seventeen units within, with densities ranging from eight units of an acre up to one hundred and ninety-nine. The proposed density and unit count fall within the range of the existing building stock on the block and immediate area. The oversized nature of the lock as well as its location near major corridor, Central Ave with multiple public transit options make the site particular suitable. Part- particularly well-suited for a high-density and multifamily use. Now, this diagram you'll see is a block and neighborhood analysis, so I dig through all the data regarding the block in the immediate area, and as you can see the block does have some higher density uses, which you can see on corner lots of the neighborhood, as well, there are some uh denser prod- or denser current homes within the blocks of the neighborhood, um, whether it's on Carlton, and then there's one on Troy as well as another one on Troy, but on the corner. And then these are some of the uh block law addresses and units as well as densities and heights throughout this block specifically. Um, so you can see that highlighted in blue is two Troy, um, with the density um, of seventy, so it's not really that off compared to what it currently exists, as well as the height. Um, it does match what eight oh seven uh Summit is, and I'll go into that right now. So in terms of the height C variance, the fourth story height. Sorry, the fourth story height of thirty-four feet, which is proposed, is within the max forty-four feet limitation of the R one peaked roof regulation, making the bulk align with the overall R one height restriction. Four stories or more, as mentioned earlier through the diagram. Ten to be on corners, on corner lots in this area, however, tax card records show that a newly constructed building in twenty twenty is four stories tall. And it's only two houses next to the current proposal. The proposal is consistent with what is currently in the neighborhood. Therefore, staff, staff sees no substantial impairment of the intent of the R one height limitations, should the variance be granted. In regards to parking, uh, it's a C variance, the applicant should provide testimony on whether the addition of the parking would be a hazard to the neighborhood. The R one district does not require properties with, with under fifty feet to pro- to provide parking spaces. The proximity to Journal Square Path Station and several bus lines in the immediate area is also a contributing factor to not allow for parking. Therefore, staff is okay with the removal of parking from the project if the, if the board feels the need to as well. And then below this, you can see some of the examples of higher density, I should have added more, but this is what I could have gathered um, in this one page. Um, you can see on Summit, there's ranges from two and a half stories to four stories, then back to two and a half, there's also the one between Troy and Summit. Um, this is five stories, um, a block away from where the proposal is. There's another four-story building. And on Troy, uh, between Troy and Montrose, there's also a three-story building. Um, and that concludes staff testimony, um, I don't know if you want me to read and go into the staff uh conditions, but I am done with my testimony.
Thank you, Francisco. I, I think that was really helpful, um, I, I had a question, because that was really a helpful illustration to look at the, um, the picture of the building on the other end of Troy Street, Troy and Matros. Um, and I appreciate that that's a higher-density building, um, it has, it's a very um long lot. And it has a very different element of design, and I wonder if if something were designed to look more similar to that building, both in terms of the lower height um, and um picking up some of the color uh, and um architectural accents of the, of the neighborhood. Um, if it would have less objection uh from the neighborhood. I don't know if you have any thoughts.
Can I just add to that? Josh, I agree with you. And I, is there not something that says it's supposed to, that the architectural design? Um, if possible, well, should fit in with the, what the other structures within the neighborhood already look like? Shouldn't it encompass some of that architectural design that's already existing? This has none of the architectural design in the neighborhood.
So we do have design uh standards, however, the design standards uh aren't really, um it doesn't say must, it just says should, shall. Um, so they're sort of recommendations based on what you can design in the neighborhood, and not really a re- uh, you know, mandatory design standard.
But should or shall are pretty strong words too.
But must is pretty.
I know, but should or should or shall is just.
Does anyone from the board have any questions at this time for um, for staff?
Not for staff.
Okay, do, do you, Sonia, do?
I, I just, I have a comment, I just feel the same way as Kathy and also as you do that, um. I think it's the design, it's really an, it's like a huge albatross, I mean, it just stands out. I think if the design was more in line with the rest of the residential homes. Uh, and, and not, maybe not as big. Uh, maybe would, you know, it would be accepted more with the community, but right now as it stands, I, I mean, I can agree. The, the design is beautiful, but not there, you know, it's just too many of these, I, I mean, I drive everywhere and I see too many of these new homes being built with the same design, it's the gray, it's the this, it's the big windows, it's and, and sometimes it fits, if it's along maybe Central Avenue, but maybe in somewhere like in Troy, uh, not as much. Because it's, it's a smaller, maybe a little more community-minded, um you know, area, so I, I would agree, I think it's just to me is would be the, the design. It just needs to be scaled down and, and maybe fit it into more with the uh, the home, the current homes, that would be my.
Yeah. I mean, was, was any other design proposed that uh, that incorporated the designs that are existing, the building designs that are, the architectural designs that are existing in that neighborhood already? I mean, this is just something that is totally I, I, it just stands out, it looks like a spaceship in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Hello, really? Sorry?
Veronica, were you?
I was just saying that that was a question, I thought.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Nobody answered.
Nobody answered, so I would say Mister.
Oh, yeah, I, I wasn't sure if there was a question in there or not.
I asked if there was another design of some sort that was proposed that incorporated the other architectural designs of the other buildings in the neighborhood. That was my question.
Yeah, okay, um, so there was other designs proposed as the project iterated from start till now. You know, I, I don't know if those design incorporated all of the you know, buildings in the surrounding area, I, I don't know that, I'm, I'm just a lawyer, I'm not an architect. Uh, I, I mean, but Rich, if you want to comment, I know this project, I know the building had been designed through def- several iterations of the design. Now, how much of the surrounding uh buildings went into that design? I, I can't ta- I can't say, but I think the one thing I can say is, there's a lot of different-looking buildings around that block. You have that edge building right across the street, you have.
This one, not as modern as this one, and those buildings have been there for years and years and years. Um, you know, I mean, I worked in some of those schools and I know those neighborhoods so well, so I mean those buildings have been there for years.
But, but let me. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to argue, I, I just, I, I just think there's a mix of buildings around there, so how do you sit?
There is a mix.
That's all.
Penny, what were you gonna say?
We're, we're, we're really deciding the application.
Exactly, that's what I thought you were gonna say, whatever else there was, we're looking at what, what was presented to us.
Right.
I mean, for argument's sake, if the project gets voted down
they can come back with a different design. As long as it's substantially different, if it gets approved. And I guess we'll see Cynthia in the upper courts. But I, you know, that's, really, we have to deal with what's in front of us.
Okay. Call it.
So i- if, if we're where, you know, i- i- I'm happy to have more discussion or no discussion, if, if anyone wants to make a motion uh, to uh approve the application, I'll have to even pull up my, my uh thing. Uh, go ahead, uh, if someone wants to make a motion.
Chairman may interrupt for one brief second.
Yeah.
Um, because of the controversial nature of this application. I would encourage commissioners when voting to potentially put their, their reasoning on the record. Either way, uh, it, it helps. And, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya, um, so if anyone wants to make a motion to uh a- approve case uh, Z twenty-one dash zero nine three um with staff conditions.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case Z two one dash zero nine three as presented to the board this evening.
Thanks, Jeff.
Uh, Commissioner Shadine?
I really think it's a very good project, uh, I understand that the neighbor uh is not happy about it, uh, but uh, it, it will be a very good addition to some uh, I mean, uh, yes.
Commissioner Green?
Uh, the neighborhood has come out and spoken. And I think it's, it's spoken very strongly against this uh, this particular project. So I would vote no.
Francisco, I think you're muted.
Oh, Commissioner Aruda?
Uh, I vote no, only because I, again, I think it should go back to the drawing board, uh, the architectural uh, aspect of it and, and come in with something that wa- is more aligned with the, with the, the the, the homes in the neighborhood and, and something that the uh, community can work with and, and can, you know, a- agree to. Uh, and feel more comfortable about, so I vote no.
Commissioner Allen?
Uh, the building is, it's it's ultra, ultra-modern, um, really nice design, does it fit what was built, you know, in the early nineteen hundreds, twenties, thirties, no. But to me, they prove beyond a reasonable doubt that they met the requirements, so I'm a yes.
Commissioner Park?
I vote no, I don't believe that the um, designs have met the requirements that the local have, have voiced, and that I, I believe that the excuses and the reasoning is more about um, their justification versus trying to work in collaboration. I believe that it should be a collaboration if we're gonna offer a variant, so I stand by my note.
Vice Chairman, uh, Vice Chairwoman Coyle?
I, I vote no. Um, I just believe that they didn't involve um, the community as much as they should have. Um, I don't believe they listened to what they were suggesting, and I do believe that the building needs to be redesigned to, should fit into the neighborhood, um, so I vote no.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Um, I'm also voting no, um, I, I didn't think that um there were really good um answers to, to meet the positive and negative criteria. Um, a- and I thought that the density was a little too high, I think that it looked like there was another building nearby that was uh, a little bit less dense, sixty-eight um, per unit or whatever that measure is, um, wh- which is only a, a little off. Um, but I, I, I still think that um, they could have tried to um nuance the building, both to um, have it, I think, be more in line with the character of the neighborhood. Um, I, I think, a- and I'm very, very supportive of having um in- increasing density throughout the city on, on major thoroughfares. Um, so I don't think that my ruling, though, is inconsistent with kind of my general belief and Summit Avenue, it is a major street. This particular spot of Summit Avenue, I don't believe i- is suitable, and, and if the city thinks that it is, um, then I think that there's we can certainly evaluate changing the master plan. Um, but I, I remember the extensive discussion on, on this block, um, when we talked about um sixteen Troy Street, um, a- and the fact that a lot like that even existed. Um, to be able to have the conversation about sixteen Troy Street demonstrated um, how very different um, this and unique this, um, this uh, street is. Um, and in this particular lot, um, while on Summit Avenue. I mean, we look at specific, uh, you know, site suitability in this specific site is, is a Is is a, while it's, it's a corner lot in a lot of respects. It's a corner lot that really faces on Troy Street, not Summit. And I think that that there was. Discussion on the record by the applicant to to kind of change the narrative. Of of the the site itself. And I think there's a difference between what keeps in, what's in keeping with the broader Summit Avenue than the. Then is the truth of what this lot is relative to where it is and and that it is. Really a lot that faces Troy Street and and across the street from it is an extremely small street. That really is a through fare for for parking for an ice rink. So there's a lot of very particular, unique features. That, while I said, in most of the city, especially on a street like Summit Avenue, I would support. You know, smart up zoning. This is not the spot for it, and and if the city disagrees, the city has an opportunity to. Reevaluate the master plan.
Motion carries two in favor, five oppose.
So.
Doesn't carry.
That was a motion to. No, the the motion failed. Two in favor, five opposed. That's right, it's getting late, Francisco, I get it. So, thank you, guys. Let's go on. We have four resolutions to memorialize. And then we can talk about. What else we want to do? Okay?
Okay. Get rid of those people?
Thank you.
And then have sound too harsh about that.
Yeah, Veronica.
I'm sorry, it's like eleven o'clock at night.
Went out the window.
I was nice, now I'm not.
Z, the first resolution to memorialize is Z twenty one dash zero five four. In the matter of Ramator Gangadin. It's, it was an application for C variances. The address was one sixty seven North Street. That was heard on September twenty second. Attending that evening were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioner Shadid, Green, Coil, Orojo and Allen. That passed six in favor, none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that is. The next case is Z twenty two dash zero zero two. It was the conversion of a two family home to a three family home. That's a D variance and some existing bulk variances. The applicant was Lisa McCormack. The address was thirty four Fulton Street. It was heard October thirteenth. Present that evening with Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, Allen, Orojo, Patel, Green and Park. That passed seven in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that. And. The next two cases occurred on December fourteenth. The first is Z twenty two dash zero five zero. That is. An application for a minor site plan approval and a use variance and a bulk variance. The address is four fourteen New York Avenue. Present on December fourteenth were Commissioners. Shadid, Silva, Patel, Donley, Brown. Allen and. Acting Chairwoman Coil. That passed five in favor, two opposed, the two opposed being Commissioners Allen and Acting Chairwoman Coil. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next case. Occurred on the same date, same seven commissioners. The case is Z twenty one dash zero nine three. It's Dwight Street, two twenty five LLC. It was a final preliminary and final major site plan approval with C and D variances. The address was two twenty five Dwight Street. That passed five in favor, two opposed. The five in favor were Commissioners Allen, Silva, Brown, Patel and Shadid. And the two opposed were Acting Chairwoman Oil and Commissioners Donnelly. All in favor of memorializing that? Now, we had a little discussion about going into executive session. That's up to you guys if you want to do that or. Unless we're too sleepy, we could do it another day, but.
Tanya, are you still on?
She's.
Can we be really quick?
Yeah, I, do you have to vote to go into a second session?
All right, let's vote to go into that, yeah. I'm in favor of going into executive session, all in favor? Oh, unanimous.
Okay, good.